And I'm gonna let everybody in right now.
Five eighteen, just a second.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm here.
All right, we're, I think, now recording and we, the meeting will be in session here momentarily as soon as we allow everyone to join in with us.
It looks like we capped out here. So it looks like they stopped coming in now.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for attending us virtually. And some of you may notice that we are, in fact, virtually, and the reason for that is our last meeting, and I'll apologize on behalf of the board, that our last meeting was a little bit chaotic, and that is just due to some technology issues. And so we felt this would be the best way moving forward until we can figure that out. So so that's why you're seeing us all from home again. I'm gonna start with the the policy zero zero six point one, and that's the attendance at meetings via electronic communications. So I'll need a motion to suspend board policy zero zero six point one, which restricts the frequency and number of board meetings participating, excuse me, board members participating in a public meeting via electronic communication.
So move this, Akhmanowicz.
Second, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, thank you, guys. If you could state your name after a motion, that I think would be helpful for Anita. All right, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, we're gonna move on to our flag salute. Joe, if you'd like to put our flag up for us. Apologize allegiance.
Flag.
You know.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Invisible.
Visible.
All right, Anita, you can go ahead and proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Akhmanowicz.
Here.
Ms. Weed.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Reimers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Present.
Mr. Jackson.
Present.
And Mrs. Mitchell.
Here. Is there anybody else? This is just to lighten the mood, that whenever somebody says present, they think of that Key and Peele skit. Present.
I only said it because Mr. Akhmanowicz usually doesn't. He didn't this time.
Some of you will get that.
I was trying to mix it up for everyone.
Yeah, I always like that.
Count us on our toes. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, um, this meeting is being recorded. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty fourth meeting.
So move, Mr. Klein.
I'll second, Mr. Reimers.
In discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are going to move on to public comment. And before I do that, I do want to let the public know that we have received a ton of emails, um, and we have read them all, and I apologize if we haven't been able to respond to all of them as of yet. We've received a number of of comments. And so while we may not be able to get through all of our public comments tonight, and we apologize for that, we are gonna try to do our best to get through as many of them as we can, I would say, maybe within the next twenty minutes or so, and see where we are, check in there, and and any comments that may be very similar to one another, we may try to consolidate. So I do apologize if we don't read out every single public comment. They will always be published at the next board meeting, or I should say, in the minutes. So with that, Terry, would you like to go ahead and start with our public comment?
Certainly. Um, the first public comment I'm going to read is from Ryan Lee, Q C E A president. Good evening, school board. At this point, I know our staff, students, parents, and community members know how thankful we are for their hard work, grace, and dedication. So I'm going to cut to the chase this evening. If anybody has been tracking the focus of my previous public comments, they would notice that I've been consistent in supporting a plan that is safe for our staff and students, as well as a plan that is sustainable for our staff members to deliver effectively. Unfortunately, the plan that is being recommended this evening doesn't meet either of those standards. I spent a great deal of time explaining to the administration and our school board members that our current model of having teachers educating both live students and virtual students has created a situation that can no longer be safely delivered by our staff. In the past six or seven months, the word safety is usually connected with terms like social distancing, P P E, and quarantine. However, I'm referring to our staff's mental and emotional safety. Although our district has focused a lot on social emotional learning in the past few years, we're failing to practice what we preach when it comes to our staff. Countless emails have recently been sent to all of you from individual teachers, our entire nursing department, grade level teams, and even whole departments that share the same workload and safety concerns. Those concerns are coming from the experts who put your recommendations and mandates into action every single day. But despite that, the recommendation this evening ignores all of that real time data and forces us to continue with what you've already been asking teachers to do. But now do it five days a week, with more live students, with less social distancing, with less time to prepare. The teachers' union was not privy to the presentation and recommendations being made this evening until last evening, when everybody else received the presentation. Again, we find ourselves in a situation where a ton of overwhelmed information and data is dumped onto us to analyze and make decisions on in just a little more than twenty four hours. This happened again recently when the teachers were surveyed on their willingness to teach virtually. They were given less than twenty four hours to respond and weren't given any job descriptions or expectations to understand what they would actually be saying yes to. We, the experts, highly trained educators and specialists, would have loved to have had the opportunity again to say yes to this. To share our expertise, problem solving skills, and possible solutions to help find a common ground for moving forward with a plan that is more safe, tolerable, and achievable for the staff. To close with ideas for a solution, I ask that you follow the state's instructional guides that explain that schools should return to one hundred percent live instruction when the COVID cases meet a certain level. Fortunately, Bucks County is still considering moderate in terms of the number of COVID cases at at certain levels. So the expert is not, I'm sorry, recommendation, the expert's recommendation is not to go back to one hundred percent live and to only offer either hybrid or one hundred percent virtual instruction until the number of cases decrease. We need to trust that our elected school board will continue to keep us safe and follow protocols set in place by their governing bodies, the state. I also believe a combination of strategies and ideas will be needed to create that improved plan. Each one of the proposals tonight on their own look frightening and unachievable. But by combining some of them together, there could be less negative impacts on class sizes and forced teacher transfers as described. I'm begging you this evening to not agree to the recommendation as it is presented, because it does nothing to alleviate the workload that we've told you is unsustainable, nor helps to create a working environment that our staff feels safer working in. Take the needed time to truly analyze tonight's numbers and options and open a dialogue with teachers to develop a safe and sustainable plan that meets everyone's needs. Students, families, building administrators, and staff deserve that one, that one more. Once again, you've heard our concerns. Have you only listened, or will you listen and act? Respectfully, Ryan Nguyen, Q C E A president. And the next public comment is from Carrie dot and O from Milford Township. And she said, what if we don't feel comfortable sending our child to school full time? Candace Titus, Quakertown Borough. If we transition back to a full school day, please consider keeping the school start times where they are now. Nine AM for elementary, eight AM for secondary. Thank you for your time. Crystal Hugner, Richland Township. I think a lot of elementary parents would like the health and safety plan reviewed in regards to recess and gym class. How are we expecting children to get any exercise? And all they do is chalk, pull a hoop, or sit on the blacktop if everything in in use and they're bored. Let them use the playground equipment and sanitize afterwards. Community playgrounds have been open for months and children are using them. You're also making them wear a mask outside anyway. So why on earth can they not? Can they not use the playground equipment? Also, masks outside. I'm sorry. Also, kudos to the board, poor gym teachers who are doing their best that they can do without being able to bring equipment outside. Again, you're making them wear a mask so they can't use the equipment. Why? Sarah McKay, Richland Township. Please revisit your recess guidelines for elementary school. Children should not be required to wear masks outside, and they should be able to access all of the playground equipment. Current CDC guidelines allow for both outdoor equipment use and for children to play outdoors mask free. Mary Psycho, Richland Township. Thank you specifically to the Strayer administration and staff. My my boys transferred to Strayer this year into the hybrid learning and are doing amazing. I wanted to publicly send my appreciation. I do hope that hybrid will continue to be an option for the students to do well with it. Brittany Dombrowski from Richland Township. Is there any estimate on when you will operate a full day regular hours? I had to pull my son due to not having proper childcare to get him off the bus, which is understandable that and that it's not your fault. But what is holding us back from our kids being in school normal hours? I thought they were going to have a dedicated virtual teachers to accomplish our kids going back full time, not reduced hours. Thank you all for your hard work. Eva Wong, Richland Township. Why was the hybrid option removed as a choice once the decision was made to go live five days? Couldn't that still be an option since the full time virtual is still going on? Jessica Kuster from Richland Township. With elementary going back to five days, I'd like to see the majority of lessons and work returning to 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 in school. Even the days my daughter has been in school, she gets home at two, two ten, and is working on schoolwork till well past seven. I understand the school day is shorter, so some instruction may run into home time. But I'm not sure why she still has artwork and several lessons to watch after being in school the majority of the day. She should not be spending five hours on a laptop on an in person days. Olivia Brett, Milford Township. The school board should be embarrassed with how members acted in the last school board meeting. The community is watching, and the language used and the way you treat other board members with opposing opinions is awful. That aside, safety should be the number one priority for students and teachers. Sending children back full five days is ridiculous. Dr. Harner said himself that there is not enough staff and it's not possible to follow the state guidelines. This is a global pandemic, not a Quakertown pandemic. It's not just children and teachers, it's the entire community you are putting at risk. I know hybrid is hard, but it's working and it's safe. Kids will be delayed, but all kids are going to be delayed in these crazy times. This is all temporary. This will end. As a community, we're in this together, and safety should be the top priority. Lisa Renner, Quakertown Borough. Both of my sons are one hundred percent virtual and will continue to be. Their teachers are absolutely wonderful and doing their very best in the situation they have been given. But it's very stressful for the students, families, and teachers doing both in person and virtual work. I agree with giving the option to go back full time, but when that happens, it basically punishes the virtual students. They no longer get the support as they often need, and they won't be able to have their live instruction once a week as they have been getting on Wednesdays. My other concern is the lack of live instruction just being on Wednesdays currently. It needs to be more often. Laurie Laurie Dombrowski, Haycock Township. Can anyone ensure that the teachers will be able to fully concentrate concentrate on in class lesson instruction rather than having the students sitting at their desks on their laptops using Canvas? This is what has been happening on the in person days at this point, and it's not effective. Lauren Pickard, Rich, I'm sorry, Quakertown Borough. Does the board have a plan to continue offering a virtual instruction for students who are in high risk categories until a vaccine can be safely administered or until it is safe for kids who are have uncompromised or other medical conditions and cannot take vaccines to return to school? What kind of consideration will be made for families with these circumstances? Dawn Hallison, Trump Bowersville Borough. Since some of you believe schools should open five days a week, let's start with holding the school board meeting in person and open to the community. When will your boards start meeting in person? Lisa Betts, Trump Bowersville Borough. I appreciate your support of Q C S T. I was very upset by certain events at the last meeting. I found it frustrating that when items were opened up for discussion, many of you talked over each other and cut each other off. At times, I could not even hear what was said. Everyone on the board should have a chance to talk with a respective, with a reasonable limits, and this was not handled in a constructive way. Some people were in the district office for the meeting. It was made very clear on several occasions that it was getting late and discussion ended, so voting on a topic could begin. Statements were made about being out late and not wanting to take all night. I'm sorry, but when you have the school personnel, health, safety, and livelihood at stake, along with the major community decisions that impact every child in the district, it does not matter how long it takes. It did not send a good message to me. The entire thing felt unprofessional. Next time, please be respectful of your community and send a better message. Joanna Banks, Milford Township. If you are meeting to discuss whether to have students return to school live, I think this is a premature decision. Pennsylvania is only just recovering from the COVID crisis and is still in a very precarious position. There have already been positive cases reported within the student population, and there will surely be more than ever in this hybrid environment. Who gave you permission to even discuss any further exposure of our children? How about asking parents before bringing this into consideration? Jason Brown, Richland Township. As a parent of three children in Richland that will be staying one hundred percent virtual, I hate to see any changes to teacher assignments. Our Richland teachers have been doing a great job and have even taken the time to get to know our kids while at home. The one option of outsourcing is a horrible idea. We trusted Q C S D to come back in the fall with a great virtual program based on all of Dr. Harner's blogs, post comments, and that Q C S D delivered. Outsourcing my children's learning may force me to look at other options for my children. Changing my children's teachers will be disruptive to their learning and growth that they have made so far. Please don't adjust teaching assignments. Linda Polonis, Milford Township. I read through the presentation and noticed that for all of the elementary schools, except for PAF, there is a note stating that students will need to move to alternate areas to spread out for lunch. Spacing will be less than six feet in classrooms. The note for PAF states that lunch will not be socially distanced at six feet, and students eat at their desk. What is the plan for lunch at PAF? Will students also move to alternate areas as the other schools are planning to do? Laura Pretterzini, Haycock Township. I have a daughter that attends the tech school and the high school and a son that attends middle school. I believe that they're at their age, they could have in school in the morning for half the students and school in the afternoon for the other half of students. In this model, there would be half the amount of students in the building and would make social distancing easier on the bus and in school. James Shot, Richland Township. Personally, a mid afternoon dismissal rather than a full day proves difficult to accommodate, especially for younger children more reliant upon their parents. I would like to see a full day schedule seriously considered to be resumed. After all, the risks will have already been taken, and the most and most should be made of the classroom instruction. Thank you. Bill Cammon, Milford Township. As an elementary teacher, I prepare daily lessons for all subjects, and I teach my live and virtual students every day. The complete lessons with rigor, authenticity, and meaningful opportunities for students. I need to spend hours each day beyond the hours I'm at PAF, making sure both live and virtual students receive quality instruction. Teachers already spend countless hours beyond the day preparing, grading, and communicating with students and parents. Dedicating extensive hours on top of the normal workload, plus continuing to prepare virtual lessons is not sustained sustainable for an entire year. Without dedicating virtual students and virtual instructors, you are compromising the students who are physically at school because teachers are splitting their focus, time, and energies between two models of learners. Please separate teachers from the current model of having to teach, plan, assess both live and virtual students at the same time for the well being of students and teachers in this district. Melissa Corbal, Milford Township. We need to know exactly what structure we are sending the kids back to for for live five days. Is five days worth of what they are experiencing now is two days? Example, not being taught live, sitting at their desk, learning from something on a Chromebook? My student who previously loved school is hating what is going on right now and has mentioned that it would be awful to do five days as it is now. Melissa Tomlinson, Quakertown Borough. I want to thank the board for voting to have our elementary students return to school full time. It's a little disheartening to review the PowerPoint provided tonight in Dr. Harner's email. The email has a very glass half empty feel. It is time that students of Q C S Ts are serviced fully. Instead of overlying, over analyzing all of this what ifs, let's aspire to think of all of the possibilities that could come out of the school year. I have been watching Bucks County's COVID hub almost daily since the opening of schools, and the numbers are remaining steady. Let's approach the reopening with a sense of all of the wonderful possibilities that could be. Shawna Doyle, Milford Township. I have twin boys in third grade. One has been able to attend four days, and the other has been one hundred percent virtual. Been very difficult for our family, which is why they're both going to be live starting Monday. And I thank you for me, for making this decision and trying to find a way to make it work. With the idea of hiring virtual teachers who sign contracts that state the position is only for as long as virtual teachers are necessary, be think unthinkable. There may be retired teachers or people who have teaching certifications who aren't currently working as teachers that would be interested in positions such as this. From the teacher staff survey, it is clear that the vast majority of the teaching staff do not want to keep the current model of being responsible for both live and virtual instruction. And I don't blame them. That's more than double their normal amount of work. Let's get dedicated virtual teachers and not pull current teachers from the classroom, which is a very bad idea. Thank you. Mairead Williams, Quakertown Borough. With all due respect to the sacrifice volunteer board members make, I implore all of you to keep your personal opinions and views out of what's best for the district's children and to refrain from using inappropriate language and cohesive tactics to get others to agree or disagree with your agenda. We are all parents, and we expect and demand this of all of you. Thank you.
Terry, how many do we have left?
Oh, geez, um, there's probably at least thirty left.
All right, how about we do five more minutes? And I know a lot of some of these that we're reading through, we have listened to an email, and some of them, I I know this is so difficult to ask, but if you could try to pick through the ones that you feel in the next five minutes would be the most beneficial for everyone to hear, and then we will go ahead and publish the rest of the comments during, whenever we get the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is from Lydia Brickenford from Richland Township. I am in support of reopening the schools to full time live. I value all the teachers and everyone working so hard to make this year work for our kids. You deserve so much praise. Thank you so much for all you are doing to make school a safe place and this year as normal as possible. I see, um, Stray for Hicks from Richland Township. Since there are cases already confirmed in the district, how is reopening and having larger class sizes possibly considered safe? Michael Smith, Richland Township. On slide seven of the presentation sent out by Dr. Harner, it says that if there are two to four cases within a fourteen day period, the school should be closed for five to seven days. We received notices for Trump Bowersville that there were positive cases discovered on nine twenty eight and nine thirty. I am curious as to why the building was not closed to comply with the information on that slide. Deana Hurst, Milford Township. Please take into consideration that Nighting Elementary is still under active construction. It may be a few weeks before there is access to the gymnasium, cafeteria, and library. At recess, the students are not allowed to use the new outdoor playset. The students are confined to the blacktop area that is much smaller than our other elementary schools. Valerie Slips Larda from Quakertown Borough. We know most of the children are not developing any symptoms. Therefore, they spread this virus. How are you preventing the spread of the virus in the community if you are opening schools? Does the community not matter at this point? And I also, why is this meeting not be being held live in person instead of online? If the issue was sound, didn't you have plenty of time to solve that issue? As cases are growing, not only here, but the rest of the world, is the school district getting ready for the second wave while we are discussing reopening? If we are solving online issues using different systems might be an example. What are the considerations taken for students with special needs who can't communicate and understand simple hygiene protocols? How is it safe for them and the rest of the students? Andrea Bergy, Richland Township. With all the students returning full time and hours, will the hours go back to elementary nine to four? Can we start with a compressed full time like nine to two and eight to one, and in January, go back to normal hours? Sheila Mackey, Quakertown Borough. Please try to get us a full time virtual teacher. I feel the time, I feel the time with the teacher will be limited when you go to school full time, starting October twelfth. My child needs their teacher interaction, and I do not want to send her to school because of COVID. We are one hundred percent virtual now and will stay. We are 100% virtual now and will stay virtual. Norrie Jacobson. Pulling teachers out of classrooms for virtual-only teaching is unfair unless the teacher requested this. Virtual teachers should either be hired into the district or a classroom. Teacher can be a volunteer, can volunteer to be virtual. But to pull a teacher out of the classroom who does not want to do virtual only, it's not okay. To disrupt a classroom by pulling their teacher is damaging to students, the parents, and the teacher. Retunes have been established and the bonds have been made. Things should just remain as they are, meaning each classroom teacher will be responsible for their in-class learners and their virtual learners. This is the only way to avoid disruption and teachers who wish to remain in the classroom do not get pulled out.
Okay, Terry, I think I'm gonna go ahead and end it there. How many more did we have left, just out of curiosity?
I'm gonna say there's at least 20.
Okay. It's 7:38 and since this meeting is so important and I know that we have almost 500 that are waiting for us to get down to business, I do apologize for cutting that a bit short and I do appreciate all the comments and we've received, like I said, tons of comments through our emails. And so if we have time, we may read some at the end. If we don't, we'll go ahead and publish those in the minutes. Thank you, Terry, for reading those aloud. Before we get to the superintendent report, I just wanted to thank you all for the public comments this evening. And I must admit, when I tell you as board members and speaking for myself particularly, it's been gut-wrenching reading through all the very strong and passionate opinions, knowing that regardless of the decisions we make, we will make some portion of the community unhappy. We know we're asking a lot from everyone, from our teachers, our families, our students, and these are challenging times. I want to thank our teacher staff and administrators for working so hard and working out of their comfort zones. You know, we know this instructional model is not something that anyone really prepared for or could have prepared for doing back maybe years ago when they decided to be a teacher. So we can't accomplish this without your dedication and we know you've chosen this profession because you love the work and the impact that you make on each student. And I can tell you, seeing how hard teachers are working with my own kids, I am blown away with how above and beyond our teachers have gone and the invaluable instruction that my kids are receiving. So we definitely appreciate all of that hard work. And we know that some teachers are still struggling and to balance the instructional model where you're teaching both live and virtual. And we acknowledge every email that we've received from teachers expressing that. We will need to brainstorm and figure out ways to support our teachers through this and we acknowledge that. And we also acknowledge the pleas from parents who are begging us to get their kids back in schools. They're seeing their children decline academically and mentally. Just today, a parent sent us a message showing how her daughter, an AP honors student, is not doing well under the virtual model. It's very difficult to read all of the very strong opinions, I can just tell you. It's a disservice that we not remember the reality of how this isolation and virtual learning affects some students. The safety of our students is paramount to us. But as I've mentioned many times, we have to look at safety of the child in the entirety. COVID has overshadowed many of issues that kids and teens are experiencing. Suicide attempts, suicides in general have increased as well as other mental health issues, drug and alcohol abuse, and other harmful circumstances. And I'll continue to emphasize how this pandemic disproportionately affects women. Women, regardless of their professional workload, are taking on the majority of the work to support their children do virtual learning. There's no end in sight to this virus, as hard as that is to accept. No decision we make is an easy one. It weighs on us all heavily. As board members, it's our job to best represent our stakeholders and democracy is at times a messy process. This is likely to be one of the most heated and passionate debates any board has faced in decades. We're doing our best to meet the demands for all the stakeholders that we can, knowing we can't satisfy everyone. So we thank everyone for their patience through this very difficult process. And again, I cannot thank enough the teacher staff, administration, parents, and community members for working together to educate our students. So with that, I'll go ahead and move on to our superintendent report and I'll hand it over to Dr. Harner.
Good evening, Ms. Mitchell, members of the board, members of the community. I can see we have quite a few folks with us, about 20 more than last week, our last board meeting. And I'm excited that we get a chance to watch Mr. Kern walk 11 miles while we're in this meeting. So good to see you, sir. In all seriousness, in our superintendent's report, we have two major items. One, the first one is a read-only. It's about our nurses' report. They are frontline contact tracers in our buildings. They know firsthand what's going on as they've shared some comments with the board over the last 24 hours personally with the board. And they gave, rendered a report and I've asked them to do that for every school board meeting. So the public has its opportunity to see that too. So it's a read-only. Next up, Joe, would you tee up the slides? This next slide deck will cover both our responses to the expectations laid out by the board last board meeting for both elementary education and secondary education with a lot of detail toward the bottom of the slides. For members of the audience, if you download the PDF, you'll get a chance to see class sizes, what they are, what they will become in some situations under different scenarios and options that will be laid out tonight. So tonight, kicking off the elementary portion of the presentation, we have Erin Alesska Carter and Chad Evans from the Office of Teaching and Learning. They are direct reports to Dr. Lisa Hoffman, who we're excited to have her back with us tonight after being gone for a couple of weeks.
Welcome back. We missed you.
Okay, Chad, Erin.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. As a reminder, based on PDE guidance, we are currently in the moderate phase. These slides and the following slides should be familiar with you or to you from previous presentations. On this slide at the top, you can see the current data around unfilled positions within the district. The bottom chart shows you the professional staff daily absences as a result of quarantine or sickness. In addition, this is the total other staff quarantined this week. You can see here the total number of students quarantined this week as well as the reason why. You've seen this slide many times. However, we wanted to remind you what happens when there is a positive case. Here's the PDE guidance on what happens in our schools when there are multiple cases within a 14-day period in one place. Here's our update on elementary reopening based on board guidance at the last school board meeting. After much work over the past two weeks and fielding many parent requests for shifts in student learning models, our elementary principals, teachers, and staff are prepared to offer students five days of live instruction on Monday. At the last board meeting, the board directed administration to provide information and an analysis on the options for a dedicated virtual teacher for our elementary students. And the subsequent slides will highlight that analysis. This slide presents an overview of the advantages of having virtual teachers as well as advantages of our current model. One of the most glaring advantages of a dedicated virtual teacher is that it allows our teachers to prepare for one modality, although all teachers need to be prepared for virtual at all times. Conversely, one of the advantages of our current model is that students remain part of the classroom community within their home school. There are three options that have been considered in response to the request for full virtual teachers. It is important to note that these options were considered in June and throughout the summer before recommending the current model. And we will provide an update on the potential impact of these considerations in the following slides. Option one, hiring new teachers would present a significant fiscal challenge in that with salaries and benefits, it would cost the district approximately 1.65 million to fill the positions. On top of that, we are challenged to fill current positions with high-quality educators vacated by current teachers on leave. A second option suggested is outsourcing virtual teachers to an external provider. Many outsourced virtual programs have students taking courses through computerized software and pre-recorded lessons. There are additional costs at approximately 1 million just for elementary and there is little fluidity or flexibility in this model. Another recommended option is to utilize existing teaching professionals. In scenario 3A, existing coaches at the district and building level would be utilized as full virtual teachers. And while it would not cost the district financially, it would eliminate many student supports, especially for most at-risk students. It would also eliminate teacher supports. One example of this work includes our district and building-level coaches having created over 100 virtual lessons to date that on any given day are utilized by 10 to 40 teachers, meeting the needs of hundreds of students a day. Ultimately, assigning district and building coaches and specialists would remove the ability to use staff to cover for increasing unfilled absences. Earlier slides provided updates on our unfilled staffing rates on a daily, weekly basis that support this concern as well as our inability to fill building substitute positions. Along with option 3A, this could be the use of existing grade-level teachers. Again, an advantage here is that there is no cost to the district. However, class size has become a consistent concern in both the live and virtual environments as well as the massive disruption caused by students being displaced. In addition, moving toward virtual teachers that are currently grade-level teachers may prove more disruptive if we are able to return to a more normal school experience later in the year. Next, Chad Evans will show the specific numbers with us.
Thanks so much, Erin. So based on this option, we have attempted some modeling to predict the potential impact of dedicating QCSD virtual teachers. On this slide, you'll note that we have the number of current virtual students across the district and the projected number of teachers that we would need to serve them. These numbers are accurate as of Wednesday. You can see that in grades one and five, we would have some difficult decisions to make in order around the class sizes. And because we're considering the impact of these teachers and the live class sizes within the district, and so we think it's important to note that there are some really tough choices around those class sizes regardless of how we allocate teachers. If we were to use grade-level teachers in this scenario, we would consider multiple factors, including the impact of class sizes in the live environment and the ability to socially distance within any given classroom. So if you look at grade two as an example, we could select a virtual teacher from the buildings with the lowest average live classroom size to become dedicated virtual teachers. In the second grade example, we would reassign a teacher from QE, from PAF and Nighting, who would then become a district-wide virtual teacher. This chart shows the overall number of live students that we believe based on our modeling might be assigned to a new teacher in their current building in the live environment if we were to choose this option. So for example, in grade three, we project approximately 20% of students who are currently live could be displaced to a new teacher and class of their peers within the building, within that same grade level in order to maintain the appropriate social distancing and balance out the average class sizes. Notice that at PAF and Richland, where we would not be pulling a third-grade teacher, the displacement would be zero and that trend continues throughout that chart. In continuation of our explanation of what option 3B, where we would have to utilize classroom teachers might be, this chart shows the overall number of virtual students that we believe based on our modeling that might be assigned to a new teacher with a new group of students in the virtual environment. Note that students in buildings without a virtual teacher at that grade level would be assigned a district-wide virtual teacher who most likely would not be at their current building. For example, in grade three, we project approximately 67% of virtual students might be displaced to a new district-wide virtual teacher in order to balance the average class sizes and devote those to a virtual teacher. And then this chart shows that potentially 27% of all elementary students, both in the live and virtual environment, might need to be assigned to a new teacher and class. Again, we keep using the grade-three example. 92 students might potentially be assigned a new teacher, which would be around 28% of all third graders. Across the bottom, you'll note the potential displacement numbers and percentages at each building across those grade levels as well. And while some buildings would incur more shifts than others, it is likely that around a fifth of all students in any given building would move to a new teacher and class based on this option. After the last board meeting, Dr. Harner sent a survey to elementary teachers about their desire to change the instructional model. And here you can see that 57% of all teacher respondents desired a change and 43% wanted to maintain in the current modality. You'll see in the table on the right, the specific grade-level breakdowns for the survey responses. This slide highlights the data from just the core content area teachers only, which removes our specialists and other educational professionals. And you'll note that the shift, the number shifted 34% wishing to remain in the current modalities, while 66% prefer a shift to full-time virtual teachers. Also of note, 4% of our core content area teachers would volunteer to teach virtually. 18% stated that they may be interested and 78% stated that they would not be interested in teaching virtually on the survey. Again, you can see additional data presented here highlighting the teacher responses to Dr. Harner's survey. While we did have 25 teachers respond that they may be interested in serving as a virtual teacher, unfortunately, only three were in a building or a grade level in which we anticipate needing a virtual teacher to maintain those adequate and appropriate class sizes based on social distancing. Finally, we are providing a decision matrix with the potential impacts based on our current model compared to the suggested models. You'll notice green, yellow, and red indicate what we believe the potential changes and impacts might be on each of the decision points. For example, when we consider the impact of teacher workload, it remains high in our current model and decreases in other models. However, the need to provide virtual instruction to quarantine in six students as well as the need to be prepared for school closures remain an impact and therefore they are yellow and determined to have some impact. In the row for cost, you'll note that our current model and utilizing our current teaching staff would not cost the district money. Therefore, they are green in the decision matrix. However, options one and two could potentially cost the district between $1 and $1.65 million. Therefore, they are red and determined to have high impact. Again, here are more of our decision points on the matrix as it relates to the potential changes based on dedicated virtual teachers at elementary. You'll note on this slide that changes to our current model will likely have high impact on the ways we serve our most at-risk students. In examining all the potential impacts, the administration recognizes that our current model has its own challenges. We will continue to strive to balance the choices and needs of the members of our school and greater community and make the best possible decisions amongst the options that we have in order to arrive at the greatest outcome for our learners. As Dr. Harner always says, "We can and will do better." In reanalyzing these options, with the added complications and challenges of displacement and disruption for our learners and families across both environments, the administrative recommendation is to maintain the current instructional model while continuing to refine and improve upon it based on what we continue to learn through our experiences and feedback from the community, our teachers, and our administration. I will now turn it over to Ms. Edwards to share recommendations related to the health and safety plan.
Okay, thank you. These are pretty minimal for elementary. We did hear a lot of comments about recess and about playground equipment. And as we, I believe, had mentioned at the last meeting... I believe, had mentioned at the last meeting, we do recommend making some changes to the health and safety plan in order to allow usage of the playground equipment and to make some modifications for recess. So other than that, we would not need to make any adjustments to the health and safety plan in order to implement the change to five days of live instruction that's going to start next Monday.
Ms. Mitchell, this is when I'd like to hand it over to you and your leadership for a board discussion on our elementary recommendation for both the health and safety plan that Nancy quickly went through and that what Erin and Chad briefed.
Yes, thank you, sir. And in an effort to make sure everyone does have a voice in this process, I'm just going to recommend that we do a roundtable and try to do our best to not interrupt each other and give everyone an opportunity. So I guess-
We could do a stack feature where anybody who wants to say something right now kind of goes on stack. We can take a list and then build off it.
Sounds good.
Because I want to talk.
Go for it.
Can we stop sharing so that we can see everybody? Like you can even-
It's a good, good idea.
So Erin was kind enough to, she showed us the beginning of that presentation. There was so much data in there. It was, it just went so, so quick. It was just so much to, anybody looking at it from the outside that didn't have an opportunity to look at it beforehand. You know, there's some pretty shocking numbers in there. I take at the very end, the administration is recommending, and this is what I had heard Chad say, that we don't change anything. We keep the model that we have today. We do not go back five days. Is that what the administration is recommending?
No, sir.
No, 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 sir.
Can you please maybe stop, if you stop sharing, I think we might be able to see everyone there. Thank you. No, that is, Dr. Harner, you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Sorry, just for, if we could back up. Joe, put that slide you had up there. It included your decision at the last board meeting, which was five days a week, live on, starting on Monday, and then keeping the instructional model the way it is. And you've already approved a decision to move forward five days a week. So it's not going backwards, sir. It's, it's-
What the, keeping things the way they are was in reference to the way the teaching model is and the way the teachers are going to coordinate online virtual versus in-person. And I misunderstood that one little part. Sorry.
No worries. Did you have further comment, Mr. Akmonowits? Okay. Who's next?
All right, and it's been unmuted the longest.
Mr. Reimers, do you like to comment?
I still think it's a bad idea. We rushed into it last week or last meeting. We came with the, the, what we were told was a recommendation to the administration about, you know, this is what we want to see, this is the timeline we want to follow. And then we talked about it for about 15 or 20 minutes, and then we voted on. We didn't consider some of the, the things that we should have needed to consider before we did that, and what it would do to the teachers, how it would affect students, the busing, the social distancing for students at lunch. We didn't consider any of that. I still think it's a bad idea. We voted on it though, so I don't understand what the point of having a discussion is because we all decided that-
I think-
-back on Monday for K to five.
If I could clarify, I think the discussion is more so around the dedicated virtual teacher, teaching model, and the different options that the administration has presented.
You know, I've said it a number of times this week in emails and to some of you. We had an opportunity to really dig deep into this back in the summer, and we didn't. We could have explored it then, and we didn't. Now we've waited until it's October, and we've gotten to a point now where by waiting, we've added, I don't know how many other extra hurdles that we would have to deal with. And I think we've done a disservice. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Who's next? Go ahead, Mr. Kern.
I guess I'm, I'm not exactly sure, Brian, if that's, if that's completely accurate. That's okay. I, I feel we- What, somebody saying something?
Go ahead, Mr. Kern.
I would, I guess my feeling was we, we spent a lot of time in the summer, we, building up to this, we talked about, one of the, the most important aspects is to monitor and see what the first four weeks would be like. So when we talked initially and agreed to the four-week, every, you know, the four-week model that we've just been doing, the idea was not to make that in perpetuity, but rather to keep examining it and make dynamic changes. And so this is kind of on schedule. The only difference is we're doing it just for the K through five at the moment and delaying the next group, six through 12. So I kind of look at it as we monitor for safety. We don't see anything crazy happening. You know, so we're kind of maintaining the course that we talked about for most of the summer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackson, did you want to go next?
Thank you, I will. I want to be, are you available for a question, sir? Dr. Harner, Nancy Anne, is anybody present?
Mr. Jackson, your internet's a little touch and go right now.
Your audio is breaking up, Mr. Jackson.
Ron, we're present.
Oh, am I getting, am I squirrely on you?
Yeah, Ron, turn off your video, Ron.
Can you hear me clearly, or am I still breaking up? Okay. No? Kaylin, go on with somebody else.
That's better. You're better. Go ahead. You're better.
Am I better?
Yep.
Okay. Dr. Harner, I have one question for you. In the summer, as I understand, we rolled out a full-time live K through five model. Five days a week, live in-person instruction. That was what was presented in the summer. How does that differ from what is in front of us today?
Well, first, I will, I'll try to, unlike some of our, the national debates where people don't answer the question, I go up, they answer the question and also comment, so. Mr., as Mr. Reimers pointed out, in the summertime, we spend an exorbitant amount of time with teachers and administrators, principals, the supervisors, Erin and Chad, Dr. Hoffman, designing a model that we rolled out this fall. Mr. Weing was in, joined, he initially, our CEA president was a part of the health and safety plan team, and when that was done and approved by the board, I invited him to participate in the rollout of the virtual model, which then became a hybrid model and, and live instruction, depending upon which way the board decided it wanted to go in August. So they're talking about scores of hours of development time, and then the teachers participated were amazing this summer, giving up of their own time, uncompensated time, learning and attending professional development opportunities to work with the model. Some did not, and, and, and that's unfortunate. So working the model, if you recall, or when we designed a task force that started in May, we had four work groups. One was health and safety, one was focusing on equity, making sure all students would, would be accounted for and taken care of instructurally in our model and health and mental health-wise. We had a social-emotional committee, and then we had the instructional committee, and we had 100, over 100 people participating of our employees, along with union leadership. So yes, there was concerns presented by Mr. Weing throughout the summer about it. Ryan did share that with me. But when we got into the fall, we started with the model that we had and working across three elements. Now, the board, last board meeting took out the, the hybrid option and says, hey, you're going to go five days a week. And so we just have the students in front of them, and then the handful of students that are home, which now we have 380-some students out of 1,890 students, which is a, a large number of students. It's more, it's about one of, size of one of our larger elementary schools of students that are learning virtually. So the flexibility of the, what we're recommending, look at the decision matrix, if the, maybe we're missing something, but it falls out.
Your comment that we remove the hybrid model, okay, to, from the K through five, again, again, during the summer, the plan was not a hybrid model for a K through five. It was a full-time, five-days-a-week, in-person instruction. That was what the administration presented the board during the summer. Is that right?
It was live and virtual.
Correct, but it was, did not contain a hybrid model during the summer.
Correct, sure. And, and then at the meeting on, at the end of August, the board, K-12 hybrid.
Understood. So my point is simply that I'm concerned regarding a lot of the teachers' comments. And Mr. Weing, you're welcome to contact me anytime to discuss what I'm about to say. But I'm concerned about the number of teachers who are not happy that we're going back five days a week, live instruction at the elementary school level, when that was the administration's studied and developed plan in the summer with the assistance of all stakeholders. And what we're asking is simply a return to what the administration rolled out this summer that everybody was on board with. The move to K through, or middle school and further, going five days a week, if you recall, our recommendation was a timeline that extended actually into the next year to give the administration time to discuss with all stakeholders and get everybody to appreciate and agree how the best do that. I would say if we're expediting that data, moving it up, I'm trusting that the administration has done the legwork to talk to all stakeholders and done proper discussion to get everybody on board with, to the most extent possible. I understand we're not going to make anybody happy with these decisions. Kaylin alluded to that, and rightly so in my mind. We're doing what we believe to be the best for our community as a whole, and I think going five days a week live at the elementary school level should not be, it just shouldn't be a big deal, and I don't understand why it is. As far as the model to choose from, I go, Kaylin, you had asked that we're discussing which model. I'll leave it in the hands of the administration. If they feel that the best way to do it is to maintain the current model, then I'm fine with that. I've trusted them to this point. I'll trust them with that as well, as what, that's what I have to say on the topic.
Thank you, sir. Who's up next?
I'm ready.
Go.
Okay, so I am actually going to agree with Brian on part of what he said in that I do believe this should have been something that we worked on in the summer. Switching now to virtual, to dedicated virtual teachers is going to cause so much disruption and so much chaos that I don't believe, there's, there's no easy way to do this. With that being said, I, I would still like to explore other options in getting dedicated virtual teachers. I mean, we're given three options here, but just in the past few days, we have lots of suggestions from other teachers of how we could possibly handle things moving forward. So what I was going to suggest is, we still go ahead, start next week with our five-day, but maybe we convene a committee with, you know, three board members, a teacher from each one of the buildings, an administrator from, you know, HR, finance, and education, and put a committee to constantly reevaluate this teaching and learning process to see how we can keep it moving and keep it better. So the teachers don't feel as though they don't have a voice in this, and the board doesn't feel like they don't have a voice in this decision. I, I mean, that, that's just one way I think we can move forward, because I don't think we're going to come up with a decision on how to get virtual teachers into our schools tonight. But I do believe we still have to move forward with our original plan that was delayed for four weeks the beginning of school and start back to full five days on October 12th. So I, I would like to hear other people's opinions on whether or not we could possibly get a committee that involves teachers, board members, and administrators to at least constantly evaluate this to say, hey, maybe we have some teachers that went on leave that may want to come back. You know, maybe, maybe we can offer different incentives to get more teachers into our building. There's just lots of questions and lots of suggestions that maybe weren't touched upon in the last two weeks.
Thank you, sir. Who's up next?
I'll go, Kaylin.
Go ahead.
I think my views probably seg, or, or parallel a little bit with Mr. Jackson's views. However, a big concern that I have is, we've heard from a lot of teachers that are not happy with what we're doing right now. And to Mr. Spear's point, that would be, I think, something to continue to look at and continue to try to make that better for our teachers, for sure. I mean, they're the ones out there that are doing it. I don't know that we need to form a committee per se, because my thoughts are that the administration are in constant contact with the teachers, as well as some of the board members, although if somebody wanted to do that, that would be fine with me. But of all the choices that we saw, you know, I am putting my faith in that the experts on this, which is the administration, Dr. Harner, with the information that he has gathered and worked with, is that their recommendation, however flawed it may be at this point, is probably the best recommendation.
Thank you.
Kaylin, can I jump in? I, I like the idea that Chris is bringing out, but he started, Chris, he started off by talking about the disruptions that we're already facing. If we create this, this committee that you're talking about, and we look at doing something later, we're just creating the disruptions now about going back to school and then doing that again when, when and if we decide to change the model again to include virtual teachers. So I don't know that, that two major disruptions in the space of the first however many months is going to benefit anybody.
Well, that, that's why I think having the committee, we, we could possibly ease this in, you know, where we maybe bring dedicated virtual teachers into K through two, then three and four, then five and six, you know, just to, you know, but if we're working with the teachers, it's not going to be this painful tear-off-the-band-aid, do everything at once and reassign 30% of the students, new teachers, reassign teachers to subject areas that they haven't taught for years or grade levels that they may have never taught. And, you know, maybe we could ease this in, maybe we can come up with, and just, I think, having this conversation with the teachers and the administrators and the board opens up more dialogue and more better communication, even if we don't make any suggestions for changes.
It just is, Ms. Mitchell, this is a suggestion. If the, if the, to ease the understanding of all the parameters that go into what we do, maybe looking, using the decision matrix, maybe we missed something, but looking at the decision matrix point by point to see if we're, we're flawed in our evaluation. But we looked at everything that we could possibly look at, from dollars and cents to students with disabilities, to minimum, or maximum minimum impact on moving students, minimum-maxing impact on moving teachers, instructional time, fluidity of, oh, by the way, we're in the middle of a pandemic. I think that decision matrix would be a really good way of, of just going, do you guys agree, disagree? And then, you know, that's- And then, you know, that's.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask, uh, how did the teachers respond to, to the process during this decision, when you were making this decision matrix? What was their feedback from this?
Well, the, the teachers that have responded to me, I've got mixed.
No, no, sir, I mean, while you were forming the, the, the matrix and while you were going through the, the ideas and the concepts and trying to figure this out, what was the feedback from the teachers who were, who were?
Sir, I did not consult with teachers. I did not, for, for putting that, the presentation together, since this was a, from a board meeting last week, the next day I met with elementary principals and all the administrators to bifurcate, looking at, because you asked us to look at secondary, looked at elementary. Then last week, every day we met in different parts of the day, and then we formulated all of our options. Then we start looking, and then we started asking parents with numerous surveys, who wants to put their students in a diff, in, in, keep them at home or put them back into school? I asked at the same time, this is all simultaneous, asking the teachers if they wanted to teach virtual or not, if they wanted to change or not. And I think what, what you see here is about a third of the teachers don't want to change. It's an upper grades, elementary thing. They don't want to change, the majority, and the majority is in the primary years. I, I see that. But if you look at where two of our schools, they don't want to change. The parents and the teachers don't want to change the model, two of our schools. And where most of our kids who were coming back in from virtual are in primary years. So, you know, we've had, we've had two weeks, and no, by the way, we've had five students with COVID, a whole bunch of other things going on. Our faculty with COVID, or suspected COVID, and we're contact tracing. So getting out there and fully staffing a product, which we did in the summertime, and then doing it in the middle of the year, it's, and I'll go back to what, I guess, my first convocation with the QCA president, put the, the airplane up in the air and we're changed, and we're flying at six, you know, you know, 35,000 feet, 600 miles an hour, and you want us to redesign the airplane. So I, you know, teachers are doing an amazing job. They have done a great job with the task. The staff has done an amazing job. But is, is, you know, as you've said, sir, changing the paradigm in the middle of the flight is not a great idea. And, and, and all the points of consideration are right there for you to consider. And I, and.
I always did, the reason I was asking, Mr., I think it was Mr. Klein had asked about the, or said something about the, all of the experts decided, and I was curious if the teachers had any feedback from the process. I appreciate your, your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's hear from board members we haven't heard from. Keith. Keith and Jenny, do you have a comment? Who else am I missing?
Well, I don't, I don't have much to say. I just am deferring a lot of ways to the administration as far as changing course in the middle with a virtual teacher.
With regards to the polls, I just want to ask real quick, Dr. Harner, is that more or less like the poll that you give into the teachers about what they prefer to do? I mean, there was like very little turnaround time allowed, and there was very little details conveyed. I mean, you, you probably, is that more of like a straw poll, would you say? As opposed to like, you know?
It was open for four days, sir, and Mr. Wean was the last one to come in at the, at day three or four, when I asked if they could tell me on Monday, so we could start planning and we could start seeing what, you know, you start out, what, asking people what they think, and we did. We asked the, the teachers that are out there doing great things, and they came back. And the challenge is, we have what, I think Chad, we have two teachers that are grade level teachers that volunteered to teach this, and we had some maybes. And then after that's all, and the maybes, most of them were in the specials. So they're, they're not available. So when it comes down to it, we're going to be moving hundreds of kids and a lot of teachers from buildings, out of buildings to, to teach this program, when what we have requires a lot of work, but it's, in, in some, a lot of people disagree, but it is an exceptional model that took months to build.
Mr. McCucci, you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, one of the things that, that I think about as our, our positions on the board is, is what we're here to do, and we're here to govern. And I know a lot of times, you know, we often get in the weeds of administration and administering, you know, operationalizing our governance with suggestions we have, with questions we ask. And it's hard to pull yourself out and, and, and not ask additional questions and not get into the weeds. And I think that, like Jenny said, I, you know, this is, I, I am not an expert. I'm not a teacher. I'm a community guy, trying to make some, some decisions with the rest of you to guide our schools and looking at all aspects of it and not just simply from a teacher's perspective or student's perspective or community person's perspective. And so it becomes very difficult when, when I have, you know, when you, when you're looking at this, when you're trying to balance all those factors, and I can't imagine the work that went into it. I want to be clear that we gave the administration essentially 10 days to do this. 10 working days from our last board meeting. There was two weekends in there as well, so. I think it's, I think it's, you know, the best that we can come with. I, I also want to say that, you know, one of the things that, that was important to us was to look at the safety and wellbeing of the kids. And while we do have some cases of COVID amongst our students, I like to highlight that there's been no in-school transmission of COVID documented anywhere in Bucks County, none. Have students gotten it? Yes. Have teachers gotten it? Yes. But when you ask the experts, the experts would suggest that they've gotten it in the community at other events and have tested positive. But none of them have transmitted it in school. And I feel very strongly that the, the parents that are pleading with us, I can tell you, my kids as well, they're not getting the education that they deserve. Despite everybody's best efforts, they're not, they're not learning the way they should be learning. And I said this a while ago, and I stick to it. This is an experiment with our kids at a very vulnerable age. And I'm not sure that not trying to get them back into the classroom full-time is the right answer by any stretch. I think we need to continue to move forward in a direction that allows our kids to get back, the teachers to do what they, they can do best. And I would, I would expect that the administration's monitoring, you know, things like the workload that we hear constantly about and trying to find ways to minimize the workload. I'm not sure how that's done. Because again, I don't run a school, and I don't run a district. But I would have faith in our leadership that they're monitoring that and, and working with the, the teachers too to accomplish their tasks. And I know it's, it's daunting. It was daunting before this. I mean, the fact of the matter is COVID just brought it to light, but I've said this all along since I've been on the board. If my mother was a teacher growing up, and there was never a night that she wasn't grading papers or grading exams or preparing for the next day. She would do it at my sporting events. And so this is nothing new for teachers. I think, you know, hearing about how it's compounding is pretty frightening for me. But I don't know that there's a right answer. I don't have any magic, magic in a hat that I can, I can give you any insight. That's just my personal feelings. And I, and I can tell by the, just the number of emails that we've gotten that there's a lot of passion on this particular subjects, whether it's emails or text messages. And I do appreciate those and that I can read through. So I will have to say, I'm, I'm like Jenny, I'm going to defer to the administration.
All right, thank you. And I'm, I think that I am the last to make a comment here. And I, for all the community members who saying, who are saying that we are rushing into this, we are absolutely not. It's been a painstaking, long process that we have been looking at this since the summer. Our intention before we started school was to get K through five back full-time. We decided to start off as a hybrid in an effort to allow some time to adjust. It was never our intention to keep that as a long-term plan. So, and it's always been our board and majority of the board's opinion to get all the students back as soon as we felt that it was safe and as soon as, as soon as possible, essentially, because we know that kids learn the best from in-person learning. So, um, I'm not sure where the breakdown is happening. We're some community members feeling like we're rushing through this. But I can assure you, if you look back to board meetings, if you look back to board agendas, this is something we've been discussing and our intentions have been very clear. As far as the dedicated teacher thing, I think initially I felt that it was not sustainable for our teachers to, to continue. And I realized that it's a very difficult process. However, I will say that I've heard from a lot of teachers who said, Kaylin, at first it was so overwhelming for me. I, I went into it, it was a learning curve. I feel like I'm getting under, you know, getting more acclimated to this. I'm feeling more comfortable. Please don't take away my virtual teachers, or virtual students, rather. Please don't take them away. I've developed rapport with these kids. And that they believe the learning curve, of course, it's still go, ongoing, but that the support, and I will defer to the administration, and I count on them to provide the adequate support and drill down. And I've told Dr. Harner this many times, is trying to find out what is the root cause? Because we have some teachers that are doing phenomenal, and they feel comfortable, and they're, they, they're loving, you know, they're, it's stressful, it's more work, I'm not going to lie, but they're doing a great job and they feel comfortable, and there are some that are not. And I will say that I also recognize that K through three is a little bit more of a challenge, because those are not independent learners, and they do require some additional support. So we recognize all of those challenges, and there's not really a great option here. That being said, you know, I, I would advocate for us to continue under the current model. And, and I would again defer to the administration to try to make some corrections and provide that additional support and find out from the teachers, what is it that we could do to support you better through the process and give it a little bit more time to see if we can work it, work it through? Because what is our alternative? Our alternative is to take the rapport that's been built through the teachers and the students, and a lot of disruption across classrooms. And it could also potentially mean if we took virtual teachers from our current teacher, the teachers that we have, then that would mean that you would be spreading more students across live classrooms, which is also not an ideal situation. And we would consider that not as safe as we would like it to be because of social distancing. So again, lots of difficult decisions to make here. I'm also not a teacher or an expert in this way. And so I would agree with what many of board members have said, and I would defer to our administration and trust that, that there are some challenges and that we will do our best to support the teachers and continue to, to look at this on an ongoing basis. Yes, Mr. Kern.
I just happened to dig through our prior board meetings, because it's understandable for a lot of folks who, you know, weren't with us on every meeting and held.
Could they not enjoy all of these wonderful midnight meetings?
And on June 25th, because the, you know, the, probably the hardest thing to do is to take a blank canvas and put some first plans on it and then get, you know, get the critiques. All right, we're, we all have, we all love to be critics. But the administration, and I don't know, how many was in the task force? Like 100, a, a lot of people were in the task force, if I recall, from all walks of administration and teachers. And the presentation you gave back on the 25th of January, which folks, I encourage folks to go download, I sent it to Ryan. But it, it, it had in there, you know, K, the K through five model was in school daily. So that's kind of what we're referring to. This, this is what we had, you know, heard back then was possible. And then there was six to 12 was A-B hybrid, and then plus virtual. So just a little historical digging in our own meeting minutes back to that very extensive presentation that the, the task force gave us. So, you know, it's, we're not rushing into it. And it's not like they haven't thought about this deeply and for a long time. So I just wanted to point that out.
So do we need to vote on this, or I'm not sure if we just need to have?
Ma'am, I need to vote on, definitely on the change to the health and safety plan for recess. So the, this and equipment, and, and it's, if it's status quo, then it's status quo. You asked us to do something. If there's no change, then we're good, and you don't need a motion on that. But I, I, again, I, I appreciate everyone's comments. Teachers have done a remarkable job. The feedback I've received from parents, the feedback I've received from teachers, how the live streaming has worked out really well. As Ms. Mitchell talked about, the primary years, K one and two, that's a, that's a big challenge. And a lot of our parents, that's the bulk of our, our students that have come back in every one of our schools, that where the parents have decided, when you voted last time to go back live five days a week, they were primary year students, most of them. And so we will do very good things for everybody, and, and I appreciate the conversation, the feedback and the full transparency of the discussion. But I need that motion for the recess, so we can formalize that in our health and safety plan, ma'am.
Dr. Harner, I, I had another question about the health and safety plan. We did at the last meeting discuss what we wanted to do about the stadium capacity, and since then, the governor's orders have changed twice on us again.
Sure, sure, my respectful request, we stay focused, because that's not even in this, this part of the meeting.
Okay, you do have it at another part. I, I just thought it maybe would be part of the health and safety plan.
No, we have the, we have, your next directive was about bringing back our plans and our timeline for secondary.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll get to that. And so, um.
Ms. Mitchell, I'll make a motion to alter the health and safety plan regarding the the playground of, at the elementary level. Is that an accurate statement, Dr. Harner, to alter the health and safety plan to the recommendation of the administration regarding the playground at the elementary age level?
I would second that.
Ms. Edwards is unmuted. I know she's ready to talk at us, and she's our keeper of, the scribe of the health and safety plan.
I'm very good at silence. I, I think if you make it a little bit vague in terms of that the health and safety plan is amended in order to change the rules around recess and the use of playground equipment, then as we develop the specific protocols for all that, it'll, it'll, as long as it fits within that guideline, we're okay.
Well, if you're still, if you're still developing the protocols, why are we bothering to vote today? Why is it important we vote today if we're still developing the protocols?
Because I'd like kids to be able to start using the playground equipment and having more options at recess on Monday instead of, instead of waiting. And when I say protocols, what I mean is, you know, how often, we've had conversations, but we have not given specific direction pending the board telling us that it's okay to move forward with this for how often is playground equipment sanitized? And what is the, you know, what, those are things that you wouldn't, you wouldn't vote on specifics at that level.
Then let me make the motion this way, then. I will make a motion that we permit the use of playground equipment and playgrounds at the elementary age level as directed by the school principals at this time, subject to alteration upon the administration developing sufficient protocols as they see fit.
I like it. That's crafted very well.
I'll second that, Mr. Spear.
Discussion.
Well done, Mr. Jackson.
That, that was an impressive motion, Mr. Jackson.
I hope you wrote it down for Anita.
So basically, we're deferring to each building principal to, in the meantime, until given further guidance to sanitize their playground equipment on, you know, their own property in between sessions as much as needed. playground equipment on, you know, their own property in between sessions as much as needed until further notice.
It's up to them until, yeah, it's up to them until the administration develops something concrete district-wide.
No, I like the first one better.
No, no, I'm just trying to translate it though, Brian. I mean.
And I will, I will communicate, you know, work with the principals and everybody will have a consistent way of approaching it so that all of our, you know, kids have similar experiences. But the idea is we want them to be able to have more options when they're outside for recess, including the use of the equipment. And we think that we can do that safely, so.
Nancy Anne, can I ask you, are there limits on how many children are on the equipment at one time and whether they're from one class, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, recess is divided into groups and most of the buildings have a kind of like rotation where children have a different area of the playground or different options available to them on different days. But the equipment itself has not been part of those rotations. So I anticipate that rotations of students would have opportunities to use the playground equipment as kind of one of the stations, for, for lack of a better word, that the, that the buildings have set up for, for recess. It would also allow the use of, of more equipment, you know, balls and more, you know, more things like that that are shared. And, and so that's an example of how it would, how it would look. It wouldn't just be 500 kids all on the playground equipment at the same time.
Just looks like that at recess.
It just looks like that. And if you're out there at recess, it kind of feels like that too. But, but that's what kids are supposed to be doing, right?
Exactly.
It's kind of sad because I've been seeing kids, you know, play on our playgrounds after school. And it's like our own kids can't even do that, you know, so this is exciting. And I'm glad that the administration is recommending it.
And since we've gotten rid of some social distancing in the school, this might be the only time when we can have the kids take off their masks safely and have a good mask break. So absolutely.
All right, well, let's go ahead and vote. Sounds like we, we all had a chance to have our voice here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? A motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. The next part of the presentation is about secondary. You had directed us at the last meeting to bring back a timeline and a game plan for moving forward with opening secondary, secondary. Planning started right away, as I mentioned previously, with the, with the principals and their team. Ms. Edwards, are you prepared to bring back what we've done?
Yes, I am. And all of the detail work underlying this was done by Mr. V and Dr. Bubser and Mr. Thompson. So I am reporting on it, but I certainly want to make sure that they get credit for all of the work that they did in order to, to have information for you about what, what is and isn't feasible. So per your direction to return to five-day-a-week live instruction, we would stay with the shortened day and maintain consistent teachers of record. And what that means is that if we started mixing students around into different periods, there's a pretty long timeline associated with that because ultimately it would require a change in the master schedule. So, so that would stay the same and we would continue to do grab and go lunches. Because with all students in the building, we really don't have any way to safely allow students to eat. One change would be to accommodate the tech school students and allow them to attend five days a week. We would go to a seven-period bell schedule. Periods are not going to be that long, but that would accommodate that. And the suggested start date would be the first day to the second marking period, which is Wednesday, November 18th. And that gives Levees, because if you remember, we combined middle school and high school into a single secondary transportation tier. And so Levees does need time to reroute all of that in order to do all of, do two separate tiers. Now that all students would be, who signed up for transportation would be transported every day. So that's the, that's kind of the bottom line and we'll go through a few details, not too many. Mr. Evans, if you would.
Nancy, if I may, just for a second, before you, you just talked about transportation. If the board approves this timeline, keep in mind, we have to stop, since Levees is just like us. We're only one deep in every, everything we have here in the district office and out in buildings. That Levees, just as Alan Rosenberg, and he has been spending the last four weeks, literally every day, moving students from virtual to live, live to virtual and all that, all day long. That would have to stop and to give him the, the time, the four weeks that he needs to, to build, rebuild the, the transportation schedules, just like the summertime. So I, I just want to point that out that they just can't magically do that off to the side. And it will, it will stop the parent choice and moving kids back and forth.
This slide shows the tentative high school schedule. And as you can see, it's back to the seven-period day. The times, the start and end time are approximate. When Mr. Rosenberg actually does all of the routing and puts the tiers together, if we need to move that back to 7:15 or something like that in order to provide adequate time between tiers, we may shift those times a little bit. But those align the best with the tech school schedule. And so those are the times that, you know, that we're showing tonight, but just understand they may shift a little bit. All right, and similarly at the middle school, which is now back on a separate tier, so the times are different. And those times may need to move forward a little bit, like to 8:15. Again, in order to provide adequate time between, between tiers, but that's what the, that's what the day would look like. Middle school and high school do share some staff. So when one level goes back to the seven-period day, the other level also needs to. So they, they need to be consistent because of the sharing of staff primarily. Okay, impact on social distancing. At the high school, there will be a number of classrooms where it is three feet. And I believe Mr. V here, he had to estimate how many students that are currently virtual may elect to return to live once we return to five-day-a-week instruction. And so using that estimate, he thinks most rooms will, will get to four and a half feet. And again, this is from nose to nose, but there are some classrooms that will be closer to three. Also, if the number of students that come back to live exceeds kind of the estimate, then those not, then the 4.5 is gonna, is gonna drop lower. There is no meaningful way to ensure social distancing during hallway transitions. So we will have more transitions with the seven-period day. And there really isn't any way to, to handle social distancing during that. As I mentioned, we can have lunches remain grab and go, which kind of eliminates that, that point of, because we don't have a way for all kids to eat six feet apart, to be able to take their masks off. And we would continue to not use lockers. Okay, but we can do it with between three and four and a half feet of social distancing. And middle level will, there'll be more, I think more places that are, that are three feet. But they can, we can accommodate all the students without using overflow. And the same things about hallways, you know, transitions. And we still will do the grab and go lunches and still won't use lockers. So it's very similar at the middle level. The current plan, if we're going down to three feet distancing, then we do not expect to have to use the overflow spaces. But if we do have more students return to live instruction than we anticipate, it is possible that we will have to utilize that strategy to not go below three feet. So we can't really assess that right now until we see how many people, you know, decide to return to live instruction. But just so you know, the use of the overflow is still a possibility. Although currently, based on estimates, the principals don't expect to have to use that. Okay, and then I did put a slide in specifically for the tech school. And you can see the impacts there for AM and PM tech, but they will be able to attend their classes at the high school and they will be able to attend their classes at the tech school on a daily basis. And I think the only impact that's not live is AM students will have to do period five virtually in order to make the whole schedule work. Okay, other implications, and, and this is kind of an important one. Right now, when we have a positive case in the, in the secondary schools, because everyone is six feet apart, we don't have any close contacts that have to be contact traced or quarantined. So in a classroom, you know, if a student's sitting in a classroom and everyone is sitting six feet away, then there's no close contacts that we have to report in the classroom. When the spacing is reduced to less than that, it is going to create many more close contacts when there is a positive case. So if, if logically speaking, you would have eight students that are in proximity within six feet of a, of a particular student, times seven periods a day would be up to 56 students that will have to be reported to the county for contact tracing and, and all of that kind of thing. So it, it will increase the burden on our, on our nurses and our administrators and such to do all of that tracing, which is very time-consuming right now for, for everyone involved. And then mask breaks become problematic. So we're gonna have to look at how we can do mask breaks. They won't be able to be as frequent and we have to figure out how to spread students out in order to provide that opportunity. So those are a couple of other impacts. Okay, so this is, I think, the summary. I'm pretty sure it's the end, right? Yeah, I think that's the end. So students would return to five days a week, continuing the shortened day on Wednesday, the 18th, which is the start of the second marking period. Buildings had already planned for this, so minimal changes are needed at the building level. The big lead time is, is in transportation. I wanted to note, because Mr. V pointed this out, that the winter Keystone exams, during which we would have virtual days for students who are not taking the exams. Consistent with past years, only the students taking exams have reported to school during the exam blocks. And that has to occur between December 1 and 15. So the way this will play out is that students, all students will be back for approximately six school days. Well, not, it's exactly six school days, the 18th until the Thanksgiving break. The winter keystones would occur immediately after the Thanksgiving break. So then there would be some students in school, but not all. And then all would return for a couple of weeks before the winter break. So it is kind of spaced out as we're going to go back to having all students in school. It does provide some kind of spacing just because of the holiday breaks that normally occur at this time of year. And then I noted the starting times and that they may be adjusted slightly. And then this was the point that Dr. Horner made is the last bullet on the slide. We would not honor, in other words, we would allow people, if, once you vote to direct us, you know, what we're gonna do, if this is the direction we're gonna go, then people would be able to make a change to request live. But then we would have to cut that off and we would not be able to process additional changes once the transportation routing process starts. Otherwise, we will never be able to get it, to get it done and have it be accurate so that we're able to get letters out in a timely fashion with new bus times and all that kind of stuff, so.
We, we were thinking about having that cutoff time next Friday, next week.
Yeah. Okay, so that is the, that is the summary of the reopening plan for secondary. And Dr. Horner, I will turn it back to you.
Ma'am, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, I'll open it up for board comment.
I, I got a couple of questions. Concerning the Keystone exams, how is it that the spacing at the middle level would be less distance than, than required for standardized testing in a normal school year? What would we do during those testing times? I mean, these, these students didn't just automatically appear now. So I would assume that's, you know, the desks wouldn't be closer than they were under a normal school year, correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
The middle level timeline for reopening and social distancing, your first bullet point in there. The last sentence says, note, note that this is less distance than required for standardized testing in a normal school year. So I, I guess what you're saying is that the desks would be spaced even closer than they are during a normal school year? If we would return back to the middle school level?
I believe when there's testing and they have to meet the requirements, that students not be closer together than X. I don't know exactly what the rule is, but, but they, they do move desks apart or use various strategies to make sure we're complying with the testing requirements.
And sure, there's no, middle, middle schools take their keystones at the end of the year, not in the middle of the year.
Yeah, I'm just showing you what's on my paper I printed out here. So, but the other question I did have about that then altogether was the Keystone exams. I, I believe I remember hearing a few years ago that those are no longer requested, required by the PDE. So, you know, is it something that we should even be taking this year? Or is it something that we could maybe, since that would be on us, to decide that, correct?
Mr. V, please give the board an update on what's going on with the legislature and what's probably gonna pass before the winter Keystone exams and why we still need a plan. Mr. V, you're out there? Matt?
I think somebody has to bring him up.
He wouldn't be a panelist, so Joe would have to find him in the list and.
I found him.
If you give us a few moments, we'll have him teed up.
Sorry, Mr. V, it seems like I always ask a question that they have to bring you out in a meeting.
Yes, thank you. I'm not able to work my camera here, but I can certainly speak. Dr. Horner, with your permission?
Please, please.
Okay, so from a Keystone perspective, to answer the first question regarding the Keystone and the spacing, is on a normal school year, we operate on a three-hour delayed schedule during Keystone testing. Therefore, we would have less students in our building and we're better able to spread students out among our entire building. And so we would have less students in every classroom than we would in this year. Due to the five-hour schedule currently, a three-hour delayed arrival would be somewhat problematic. So we, we are looking at a virtual option for those days. As far as the legislator and the requirement, legislation and requirement for the Keystone testing, currently there is a bill on the, I believe it's on the Senate floor now, I think it passed the House floor, that postpones the Keystone requirement for both state graduation requirements, but also would override the local requirement for that. It postpones it to the 2223 school year. And so that examines students in the current 11th and 12th grade. However, the requirement still exists for the current ninth and 10th graders. The Keystone exam is administered to students who are finishing in courses that are connected to those Keystone exams, which is Algebra I, which we, we offer in eighth and ninth grade traditionally. Biology, which we offer in 10th, as well as literature, which is offered in 10th grade. And so all students who are currently in any of those courses, Algebra I, Biology and Literature, will be required to take the Keystone exam because they are currently in ninth and 10th grade. And for them, it is still currently, and even if this bill passes, which it currently has not passed yet, but even if it passes, it's still a graduation requirement for those students. Yes, we could give it to those students in the spring. That is, that is acceptable. But it would be problematic for those students who have already completed the course, mostly the advanced students or honor students who complete those courses in eighth and ninth grade. Those students did not have an opportunity to take the test last spring when they were course complete. Those students did not have an opportunity to take the test last spring when they were course completers. And so if we don't offer it to them this winter, then we would further postpone it to the spring, therefore increasing the gap between the instruction that took place last spring. And the time of the assessment. And so there is a loss of retention there because of the gap that we have between instruction and assessment. And so my strong recommendation is to offer that test to those students who have already completed the course as quickly as possible.
Well, I would agree with your your. Your assessment of that. I just wanted to ask the question, that's all.
Can I ask a question too, because I'm pretty sure someone said this, but. Don't all the keystones have to be completed in person? Even the virtual students would have to come in?
That is currently correct.
Is that a possibility that that could change?
Not that I'm aware of. For this year, the only accommodations that were made when it comes to testing were by the College Board for virtual testing. I have not. Seen anything related to Keystone testing virtually.
So my follow up then was, have you at least started thinking about the plan to bring in the, and I forget the numbers of virtual students at the high school? And how would that?
My most recent number is three hundred and sixty three students who are virtual. They will need to, they will need to come in in order to take that exam. Not all of those three hundred and sixty three students are course completers of Algebra One, Biology or. English two, so not, it would be a very small number of those students for the winter session. I anticipate that number to be larger in the spring session.
Thank you.
And Mr. V, can I just ask a question on what's going on with the College Boards? From what I've read. They're not always going forward this year, but for students getting ready to go off to college and take SATs and ACTs, the school used to offer. Those tests and also prep sessions. So what's happening with that?
Yes, Mrs. Widdie, the the frequency and timing of the tests that are offered at the high school when it comes to ACT and SAT has not changed to our current, to our common practice. There was a cancellation last spring due to COVID, but we are back on the usual schedule for this current year. The one change that we were able to make, and and let me just give some background here, the SAT and ACT are not administered by the school or by school. Employed staff. It's actually the College Board and ACT that employs the staff that administers the test. So if they use our teachers. Then our teachers are employed by the College Board to administer that test. For our next upcoming session, I believe it is in December for our SAT, which is a regular regularly scheduled. Date as it has been in previous years. We did increase the number of test takers from two hundred to three hundred, so the capacity is larger to accommodate more students for that. For that session. So from a timeline, timing and number of frequency of tests is back to what we were in previous years.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? Do we need a motion?
I want to raise a couple of questions real quick. Doctor, Ms. Edwards, you mentioned the busing. We want to finalize the busing. I think, Dr. Harner, you said you're looking for that to be hit by next Friday. If we have transfer students, are they can be forced to be virtual, or are we going to try and fit them in? Are we going to handle transfer students or new students?
Sure, that'll be a case by case, case by case. What we have going on right now with class sizes, putting them in and schedules. So that could be a transfer student with a with a disability and they'd be in every day of the week, could be a transfer, I mean, just. Could be all kinds of different scenarios for that.
Okay.
Appreciate you asking the question, but it's a, it's a lot of different kind of answers.
And what might, what it might trigger, Mr. Jackson, is the use of the overflow areas.
Well, that was my second question.
Which was referenced, so it, you know, while.
It was.
While the principals believe that they can fit the expected number of students and maintain the three, at least the three feet. If more students return than expected, or if a hundred students show up and enroll. Then it, you know, may trigger the use of overflow areas in some periods for some classes where there just isn't adequate space to even meet the three feet distancing.
And that's something I'd like to put in front of the full board, frankly. I was never a fan of the mention of open spaces. As it's been bantered about and suggested in various scenarios. I understand that we're asking students to come, we're asking the administration to prepare a plan to bring back our students full time, live instruction, five days a week. And we understand that there's going to have to be some give and take in there. And the big, when we talk about big give and take, the primary thing that's to give and take is social distancing. We're not saying anything about masks. We're not saying anything about cleaning. We're not, we're not begging that you give us full hot lunches every day. The only thing we're conceding is that social distancing is going to have to suffer. I personally am not willing. I would, I don't, I do not want to see any students have to suffer in an open area. And if that means social distancing has to fall below even three feet. Then as far as I'm concerned, we're giving the CDC what it asked for in our best effort to provide six feet, but in those situations, we can't. And I understand the administration is trying to hold tight to those guidelines. However. I'd like to see what the other board members think. I do not want to see any child in an open area. Because we've deemed there to be too many students in a classroom. Because there's a social distancing concern, and I'd like the other board members to discuss that.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson, I can tell you, and Kalen can probably back me up on this too. When we were in the the school buildings.
You're reading my mind, Chris.
We were laying desks out and at three feet of distancing, even the, you know, the principals even standing next to us and us, we were like. The desks were never spaced, even in full classrooms, that close. It it's just, you know, it it doesn't exist now. If you went into any school in two thousand nineteen, desks were never closer than three feet. You couldn't walk between them if they're closer than three feet, so. I don't believe that we have to. If if we didn't have to use overflow spaces in February of two thousand nineteen, we don't have to use them now. There. We can get creative and figure this out because.
I'm struggling with that too, not to cut you off. And look, the measurements, we've been there. Like, I've been in these high school classrooms. And we were able to fit like twenty five kids in a classroom at almost six feet. So I think maybe there are some classrooms that are a bit smaller, but even. I mean, if we have to be creative here, let's get some partitions. You know, what what can we do to creatively make it safe? I just can't, and listen, I I will be up in those classrooms come time where it's five days a week. I want to see it for myself. Where they are going to be three feet apart. I, and I'm not trying to say that to discount the work that the administration has done, but. It's hard for me when I have seen it for myself, that we can fit all these desks in at a at a close to six feet. Over twenty desks in a classroom in the high school, and now we're saying saying it could potentially be less than three feet. I just. I have, I'm skeptical about that.
I still have my tape measures in my car.
I think the fundamental thing is that we can do it. And and we'll get it done. It's going to be stressful for the teachers there. But as I've shared with many of the, or listened to many of the teachers there, it would be a lot easier to have those students in front of, more students in front of them. And so they can. Do what they love to do, right, with kids in there in the classroom. Some of the pictures that I've seen, and I know, Kaylin, I was there with one of your two trips and I watched you move around the desks. You and and David and and Chris, along with Dr. Damsker on that one trip. I think it'll, it'll work out. You've told us to make it live and and we'll get it live and we'll still have a good percentage of our students at home, so it should not be as stressed. My biggest concern, frankly, is the hallways. I was there during a class change and it was like, where are the students? When you're, when you're more than doubling that, because more students are going to come back out of virtual, besides the those that are in hybrid. The hybrid together, it's going to be a challenge then, and that's where we're going to have to be very careful and have different systems ready. Safety systems ready to go in November, if you approve that date and moving forward.
And as far as the science is concerned, and and I hate to put you on the spot, Keith, but. I think that there's been a lot of comments that we've received as well that we're not following the science and I I would strongly. I would strongly debate that because there has been a lot of science that's proven. The benefit between three and six feet is is, it's very much, it's very similar. That there's been, I emailed it out to a few people and I'm happy to to post it for later review. It was a compilation of over a hundred studies done in seventeen countries that have all stated. That the benefits between three to six feet are similar. Is eight feet better? Sure. Is ten feet better? Sure. Keith, you were mentioning something about that in terms of what you're learning. And your practice, and again, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if you could speak to some of what you're hearing in the health industry.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I mean, you know. And I had a lengthy conversation today with Dr. Damsker, who was was. We were talking about the science behind the data that he he was able to share. Which, by the way, is extremely robust, and I think as a county, we are very fortunate to have somebody in a position like his. That that clearly looks at data almost by the hour. It can give us a lot of insight on on to transmissions and spreads and. Some of the information he had, I mean, you know, he's been collecting the data since the end of January, beginning of February. So. I I was, I was extremely impressed with with the data. And and really talking about transmissions and in school transmissions and sports transmissions and the like, and. You know, where where we think, you know, a lot of us get our. Science from reading news articles. Which on any given day, one news article can show one thing and the next day, somebody else can prove it wrong, and really. To analyze good research is is very difficult, and I think we have to really defer to the experts that that track this stuff day in and day out and and have data that it supports their decision making. And I think he's so busy with collecting information and giving his opinions that that. He just hasn't been able to sit down and compile his data to publish it, but I imagine we'll see some data come out of Bucks County. That was really spearheading the state and and decision making and accuracy of the decision making, and so. Look, there's been no randomized controlled trials that that show, you know, three feet is worse than six feet. They, these are all observational trials. A randomized controlled trial would would take every other person and say, you you sit closer to somebody with COVID and you don't. I think that's a, you know, that's probably a study we're not going to see. So we go on the observational and and that's what we have. There's some guidelines that came out recently from the CDC that talked about aerosolization. I have not read the research. Behind it, but my understanding is, again, it was, you know, on a bus and a choir. Involving people that were, you know, in close contact with each other in other ways, and so eating lunch together and stuff. That's really where we're going to see the transmission. I don't, I don't think it's going to be in the classroom environment. I think it will be when we let our guards down and people aren't wearing masks. I really feel that as long as people are wearing masks. You know, you can, you can rest assured you're going to be okay. But it doesn't mean, you know, I wouldn't socially distance. It doesn't mean that I wouldn't wash my hands. It just means I would do it all. And by guidelines, you could even argue that you should be wearing eye protection. Because that's what, that's a route of transmission as well, so. I don't know. I think we, I think you do the best you can, and and, you know, we monitor this stuff daily and and see where it takes us. That's just my opinion.
And if we see, the thing I want the community to know. If we see transmission in schools. We're going to take it serious. We're going to act quickly. We have not seen that. Of course, we haven't, schools have not been open that long, but there have been schools. Around the country and around the world that have been open for a while, even some at the height of the pandemic. And the in school transmission was relatively low. And what we've seen from the data. Is that even if you look at the hybrid model. In some ways, that's not been a safe. Because what happens is those kids who are on hybrid, the days that they're not in school, they're either. You know, at home, interacting more with their friends, or they're in childcare centers where they may not be following the protocols. In a way that the the public schools would, and we have evidence of that. In our own district. So, but I don't want to take up too much of the time. I want us to make sure that everyone has a chance to have an opinion before we move on to a vote, so. What other comments do we have, Mr. Kern?
The only thing I would add is just to highlight, you both kind of hinted at it, but it's the trust but verified, it's the monitoring, right, it's. It's regardless of how well we believe that we're all doing the right thing. We're still measuring, Dr. Damsker, you know, like. We're tracking the actual cases and everything, so it's, that's the actual final layer of defense is, doesn't matter, you know, the viruses. You know, if it if it comes in, we're going to see it and we're going to react, so that, to me, that's the, that's the safety net, is we actually are looking. For real cases and we'll take action, so regardless of. Anything else, that's that's sort of the stop that makes me. Find, you know, that we're doing, we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
And and I just wanted to to sort of expand on what Keith said too, that. You know, by us allowing our kids to come back into our schools. We're actually putting faith and putting trust into our health and safety plan, that we say that we believe our health and safety plan works. So we believe that the masking and the extra cleaning we're doing and the, you know, recommending hand sanitizing, keeping kids. You know, limiting the amount of kids into bathrooms as much as we can. We are trusting in our health and safety plan to keep spread from happening in our schools. So I believe if we keep masking, like he said, and doing what we've been doing, yes, we can get a little bit closer and still be safe.
Other comments?
Just a final note on the on the Chris's comments, if I may. I hats off to Nancy, the principals and the nurses. They are working seven days a week now, doing contact tracing themselves, helping that process. Making sure when students are are or somebody in a building is. Pot potentially very positive because of something at home. That, and there's something in the same building that they're not interconnected, so we don't have issues. It's just a incredibly time consuming task, but it has worked. And I'm grateful that, Chris, that you you recognize that. Thank you.
And if you didn't already love nurses, and I do, nurses are awesome. Shout out to our nurses because they're doing an amazing job. They're, you know, tending to all of the sick children who come in and out as as Dr. Harner mentioned, so I. I did want to make sure to give them a quick shout out. Brian, Mr. Reimers, did you have a comment? I think you were waving at me.
Well, I started to speak before Dr. Harner, or Dr. Harner and I started to speak at the same time. I mean, you guys have all said that you recognize social distancing as an important aspect in in mitigating the the spread. We've gone through with the kit, with the K to five world, we've effectively eliminated social distancing to the extreme, so. We've, we've taken out every effort we could make to to make it as safe as possible. And I understand it's, you know, even even everybody wants to follow Dr. Damsker and he says, you know, three feet is acceptable, whatever.
Whatever. But even he sat here in our meeting back in, what was that in July? And said, he didn't think it was realistic to expect students or, or teachers or anybody to keep a mask on all the time. They, they were bad at it. And he sat here and said that. So now we're putting students into a school. Where we, even the expert, your expert says. That masks aren't going to be worn effectively all the time. And we're asking them to sit closer to each other and, and be within that range. I, I think we're, we're. Failing in our, our, our responsibility to create the safest environment in school possible by opening where we are. That's it.
So I, I, I stand to completely disagree with you, Brian. Uh, on the fact that we, we, we haven't thought about that. We've thought about it at nauseam. Um, and, and we've talked about it at nauseam. And we've considered it ad nauseam. And it may not be what everybody wants. But we're, we're going to have to sacrifice something. And if we got reports early on from Dr. Harner that says kids were very compliant with the masks. We were told that from the administration. So if their mask and socially distanced to the best that we can. Then I think we're doing our job. If we all had the ideal world, I think every one of us on this board would say, spread them out to six feet. If you could go to seven, go to seven. You can go to eight, go to eight. I know I would. I don't think there's one person on this board that disagrees with that. But we're trying our best to balance all of it. With not being malicious, with not being unthoughtful, with not being ungrateful to all the work that's going into it. So I, I, I think just the opposite. I think we're trying our best and we have to continue that. But we have to continue to push to get kids back in front of their teachers where they can learn appropriately. Because guess what? I don't know. No one can predict where we're going to go from moderate to low. No one. We may not go that way for five years. It's not going to be with a vaccine, I can tell you.
And I would encourage people to look at the new CDC guidelines as far as school reopenings. A lot of people keep talking about the CDC. The CDC released new guidance, um, that I believe would put us in the light green car category. Uh, which encourages us to get all students back to school. The CDC has continuously said six feet is ideal, seven, 10, 20. But the, he, the CDC director even said mask may be more effective than a vaccine. Right? If everyone's masking, that is going to be key. To overcoming and, and keeping the virus from transmitting. So. I, and I agree with.
We have a motion recommendation for you, ma'am.
Go for it.
Okay, um. I'll, give me a second. I will read it to you. The motion is to reopen secondary for five days a week. Uh, instruction with a virtual option with the current instructional model and a shortened day effective November 18th, 2020.
Do we also have to motion to amend this health and safety plan for secondary? To allow for less than six feet of distancing?
We did that last time.
To eliminate any reference to an open space.
Um, Ms. Edwards, uh, let you keep.
I think since we have time before November 18th, that we can bring back the health and safety plan adjustments that are necessary to the next meeting. Um, for you to vote because we have plenty of time.
We did vote on that last meeting though, that.
No, you didn't.
I didn't think we did.
And, and so this motion allow us to set in the motion, um, a lot of things so that if you would give that to us, that'd be grateful.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Can I hear it again?
Yes, sir. All right, one second. The motion is to reopen secondary for five days a week. Instruction with a virtual option with the current instructional model and a shortened school day effective November 18th, 2020.
So it will be a shortened school day to allow teachers the time to dedicate to preparing instruction. And engaging with students in virtual environment.
Yes, ma'am.
That makes sense, Keith. All right, any other discussion? Should we do a roll call? Anita, let me do a roll call on this, please.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. McCucci.
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowits.
Yes.
Ms. Weed.
Yes.
Mr. Reimers.
No.
Mr. Spear.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes.
Eight to one, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for the discussion.
The next, next topic, just to finish out the secondary level and, and to make sure Chris Spear, um. Just in case he forgets, but I doubt it. Um, Joe, would you put up the, and he never forgets. Um, if you would put up that document I sent you about alumni field. This is the, um, the, our athletic director, uh, took the guidance that came from the PIA double A and from the state. Um, the governor's new guidance that Mr. Spear just mentioned maybe thirty minutes ago. Um, this is a seating capacity that, that we have at, at the stadium. I know Ms. Mitchell, maybe others have mentioned four thousand. Um, seats in the, in there, but it, we've all, we've been in there. Sylvia's been in there measuring. So this is the capacity at twenty percent is the new guidelines as six hundred and twenty, uh, people. And this is the breakdown and her recommendation. And, um, we would have to modify our health and safety plan, I believe. Isn't that right, right? Correct, Ms. Edwards? To meet the governor's guidance and our health and safety plan for athletics?
Yes.
And I would like your approval for this, this model.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Klein.
Our second, Nevo Akmanowits.
So the motion on the floor, just to clarify, is to adopt the recommendation from the administration as well as other staff on the capacity. Based on the governor's new order for spectators. Discussion on this.
I did have a question. Um, well, I guess this is just for Friday, October ninth for, um. But I did not see the marching band on there at all. So is that because, doesn't the cheerleaders have like senior night or something that night or?
Um, Ms. Callis, I know, uh, Joe, would you please let her go live? She, I know she's out there.
Well, he's pulling her up. Do you mind if I just say, um. I, I saw that there was dedicated tickets for the board and wow, I appreciate that. Um, if there's a student or a, a family. Um, that can use my tickets, um, please. Uh, I'll, I'll save it for when my, my son's playing on that field.
Yeah, I'm all over that, Keith. Let them take our tickets, obviously.
I think you should sit outside the gate and sell them. You can probably make some pretty good coin off them with the, uh.
Well, I'll turn them in. I'll, I'll be all right.
Is that how you got that Tesla there, Chris?
It's funny that my wife asked, you know, when can she go see the marching band? I said, well, we're not allowed. We. She said, well, aren't they going to have, you know, with the new world, can have people there? I said, yeah, but not us. Just, just like the family members, the people who, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I couldn't see my son playing his game today and I was heartbroken because it was away and we were respectful of the rules. So if there's a family member that wants to see their kid, please.
Thank you, thank you, sir. And if there are any, I'll, I'll, I'll have Terry send out a note, uh, tomorrow to see who's interested. And we'll put everything else back there for the, for more family members. Sylvia, would you please explain, um, your recommendation?
Well, we started with the capacity, which really is thirty-one hundred. We, I mean, I did the, the seat test and went through and. And counted a couple of years ago. Um, and then the directive was. To get, in order to get football parents into the game, get cheer parents into the game. Um, band parents into the game and then students if we could. Um, we did get an email from Mr. Parker and the band that they would be coming for pre-game only. And not staying for the game. So that's why we didn't include the band parent tickets, um, in six hundred and twenty. So we chose to give some of those to students on a lottery basis. What we're going to let in fifty to sixty students that can come see each of the games.
Did you per chance, I know this would be hard, but you know, family members don't need to be six feet apart, right? They, they eat dinner at the dinner table. They can eat popcorn and, and the bleachers. Did you? Would that affect any of the numbers?
Probably not, but we did take that into consideration that a group would sit together. And then they would have to distance six feet from the next group. It's really difficult to calculate that, not knowing who's going to be there and who's going to sit together. So we did the best we could. Um, you know, if we're off by ten or twenty tickets, that's not going to be a big deal. We are, we offered two tickets to every participant. And allowed family members to contact me if they needed additional family tickets. And all those have been accommodated.
So wait, let me understand correctly, our marching band, they are or not included in the number of tickets?
They, they are not. They are coming for pre-game and they are choosing not to remain at the stadium. So if the band's not there, the fault, the parents want to stay.
Who makes that choice?
That was the band, then not us.
Yeah, we are getting some, uh, some, uh, responses from parents here that are, that have been questioning that. That's why. I, I, I didn't know if, if that choice was made because. The limits were so small that the band decided not to come. And now that they've changed. You know, that, that, that's the real question. I mean, so I, I sort of did a little tour last week and visited some football games. Uh, just to see how other schools were doing it because I like driving that Tesla around. It's kind of fun. And, uh, I, I did go to Sotterton. I went to Central Bucks and I went to Palisades. And all three of those had pep bands in the stands and, uh, my brother-in-law is an assistant coach on the football team. He did mention to me that. The football team really likes to see the band. So i- if, you know.
We, we offered that option. We offered that option to the band as well as the full band staying. And we would have adjusted the other numbers of participants, even, even students.
Let's have an offline conversation if that's okay about this because I'm not okay with the band being excluded. In fact, it, it really kind of burns me up. But I don't want to go into it right now. It's not the band's choice. Whose choice is it? Is it one person's choice or is it, is it the band member's choice?
It sounds like it was the band director's choice. I don't know.
I don't like that. But I digress.
Why don't we take it offline? Please approve this plan as it is right now. Then we'll. The weeds and make modifications to it. So we, we, um, that you have, understand that it's twenty percent at thirty-one hundred. And we'll work within that. We'll give Keith's tickets over to the, or seats over to the band and some of the other, other things, but we'll get it done. And ma'am, we'll, we'll follow up with the band director and, and see what's going on there. Is that okay?
That seems fair.
Yeah, could you share that screen back up on, uh, just before we vote here? So I could take a look again at the.
We better not be the only marching band who's doing that. And, and I will have words later about this.
Whoops, let me mute my dog.
Noodles. All right, let's go ahead. Chris, are you, do you want to add more comment or anyone else?
No, no, that's it. You know, I, I just want to make sure that, yeah, again, that, that we're not the only band. And if. You know, if our band director's decisions were made because, um. Because the limits were too tight and he was being, you know, kind to say the cheerleaders or the student section. That now we, it looks to be that we have that room. So.
And that very well could be. It could just be a matter of not, not having the room previously. So we just have to follow up. All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Can I, can I, can I ask one more question? Sorry about this.
Yes.
So we're voting on this as is. If, so one, one of the things that I'm. Curious about is where they got twenty percent and why not twenty-five, maybe thirty? It's just a, I think they picked it really out of the air. Um, which is bothersome because there can't be data surrounding this.
It's the governor's directive, sir.
Yeah, I, I know. My point is I don't, I don't know where they got their data from. Why, why twenty percent? What, what's that? What's that magic number anyway? I. My, my question is if, if, well, Monday he says it's twenty-five percent. Are you going to need a board approval to move that? Or can we put some language in this? That affords you the opportunity to flex your plan? Did we talk about that? I missed it.
That's a fair point. It sounds like we need to make a motion that allows the administration to increase. That number as the governor changes the, the, his mind with his finger in the wind.
I can add this, the, the governor's recommendations were based on capacity. So the, the capacity of your stadium determined if it was fifteen, twenty or twenty-five percent. So our capacity won't change.
Yeah, but the fifteen, twenty and twenty-five percent, he just plucked out of nowhere. Let's be honest.
Well, you don't know that, Ron.
All right, let's not, let's talk about that over a beer sometime later.
Actually Governor Wolf. Sylvia was speaking to though, uh, the, and what Ron is saying is the governor could change his twenty percent that we're limited to now to say. Twenty-five or thirty percent in another two weeks. I mean.
We'll bring it back to you if it's.
Four times in the last month.
We'll bring it back to you if it changes and, and please let us use our judgment.
Yeah, but to Keith's point, why, why bring it back to us? Just say, just make the motion that you can increase it as the governor changes his mind.
I'll amend the motion since I presented it to add that language to the motion.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
I'll second that. Keith.
Vote now. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The, the last, uh, report that we wanted to present to you was, uh, requested by Ms. Mitchell. It's about substitutes. Um, addressing some of our shortages. She heard about some strategies that other districts are using and raising the rates. And I asked, uh, Mr. Shock to put together a presentation for you. So Zach, you're up.
All right. Um, Joe, do you want to pull that up? Thank you. Want to go ahead and move to the next slide? Uh, and you'll notice, uh, the data was pulled together by Barb Phillips, our human resources manager. So I'm going to start by talking a little bit about substitute teacher qualifications. As a reminder, we do use a third party as do the majority of the Bucks County school districts. To be a substitute teacher, you have to have a PA, uh, teaching certificate. Or a bachelor's degree and have gone through a, um, what's called a new teacher or a guest teacher program. It's a two-day training. And then we do what's called an emergency certification to, um, certify them for per diem subbing for, for the school year. So all of our substitutes do meet those qualifications. You go next slide, Joe. So as of right now, we have about fifteen, what we call long-term per diem substitute teachers. These are not. Individuals employed by us. They are employed by our third-party vendor, but are in, um, positions. For an extended period of time, the same position, I should say, for an extended period of time. Out of those individuals, we have about one-third who are not actually certified, um, in that area or are a guest teacher. So are not technically, um, a certified teacher other than the emergency certification that we have applied to the state for. So that indicates that, that we are struggling as are most districts to, um, fill some of these longer-term needs or even shorter-term needs. Go next slide, Joe. So there's a lot of data on this. I want to focus on a few, few columns here that are highlighted in yellow. Um, although we have fewer teachers this year, we have seen through the first thirteen days of the school year, this data was compiled directly Tuesday. Um, and does exclude the Wednesday virtual days because we don't, um, procure subs on those days. We actually have a hundred and six more absences. Um, and if you look to the right, we're actually securing more subs per day. This school year than we have through the first thirteen days of, of the last school year. So that's, that's good news. However. The, uh, increased absences, which I'll talk about on a later slide, primarily due to COVID, we're, we're simply not able to keep up with. Um, as Dr. Hunter mentioned, um, Ms. Mitchell asked for some data on, on the substitute teacher rates. We do. We do look at this data every year. It's becoming more and more competitive with other school districts. Our school districts aren't quite as open about what they're paying and what they're doing as we, as we once were. Uh, but we were able to compile some data. What you'll notice is this school year, we have seen some of the surrounding districts start to raise their per diem rate. You'll see when I say surrounding that, that I typically look at Pen Ridge, Palisades, Sotterton, and Southern Lehigh and Upper Perk. Which are the districts we primarily compete with for, for substitutes. The average is about $116 per day. We're currently paying 105. Now, you'll also notice that the longer-term absences, the average for surrounding and the county, it's the same $125 per day. We're actually paying 140 there. One of the strategies I know that Ms. Mitchell heard about for one individual school district was to significantly increase that long-term per diem rate. So that number you'll see there, I won't name the school district, but they are paying $175 per day. I believe to try to combat some of the FF-CRA absences that they're seeing in their school district. If you want to go to the next slide. So as I stated earlier, we are seeing a significant increase in absences through the first couple of weeks compared to last year. 179 of those 313 absences, we have deemed to be related to COVID and we did break it out. The majority of them are due to the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. What you'll notice there, and then we kind of broke it out from there with individuals that are, are quarantining either for themselves or because they were exposed to somebody in their, their household. There are a few positive, you know, you saw earlier, there are two individuals. So those are the number of days that those individuals have missed due to those positive tests. Go next slide. One of the trends that we've been talking about for years is the significant decline in just the substitute teacher candidate pool. We've sort of discussed that in detail over the years. I'm not going to go back into it. We, we have actually seen so far this school year, a little bit of an uptick in our, our sub pool. We have 99 active subs right now. The majority of them are only registered with Quakertown School District. About 56%, the other 44% we do share with other school districts. One of the things that, that we've discussed with our third-party vendor as to reasons why we're seeing that, that pool dwindle lately, especially this school year. There was an article about this recently. There were a significant number of teacher retirements and resignations throughout the state this school year. So what happened there is schools, as they replenished their ranks, they were pulling these individuals out of the third-party vendors candidate pool to fill permanent positions. And, and as a result, we have less substitute teachers to, to pull from, to fill these needs. So we did have one recommendation here because we have fallen behind. And these recommendations would only be for this school year only. And then we could reassess this la- uh, next year would be to increase our per diem rate from 105 to 120 to remain competitive with the surrounding districts. Uh, we don't have a recommendation. We put, we did put it on here. I know Ms. Mitchell wanted to discuss the long-term rate. We are competitive with that compared to our surrounding districts, but if that's something the board wanted to consider increasing to combat some of those FF-CRA leaves that is, um, um, on here for consideration. These, if the board wanted to vote on them, would have to be motions made later on in the agenda. They're not on there for a vote. And I just want to be clear when I talk, we have a couple of different categories of, of subs. When I talk about long-term per diem, again, that those are not our employees. Those are sourced for teachers. And the reason that category exists is anytime we have a teacher who goes out on leave and is either being paid or still on benefits, such as a family medical leave of absence, we do not hire an individual as a salaried union employee. Once the individual who is on leave expires their paid time and their benefits, then we would hire that individual as a salaried benefit employee into the district. So that's something we, we do every year when, when the situation calls for it. This will only be for those long-term per diem absences where our teacher is still being paid or on, on our benefits. So I can take any questions if anybody has any, or if the board wanted to discuss that, that long-term per diem rate.
I appreciate the information and just so the board can understand where I'm coming from with asking for the information.
Kaylin, you're really, really quiet.
How about now?
Little better, but still quiet.
What? Hold on. How about now?
No, still pretty quiet. Zach, let me ask a quick question. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
I was just going to say while she's trying to figure out her sound, can, can I ask if you were going to think about raising the, uh, the rate from, for the long-term sub from 140, what would, what would the range be? You said it would, that the other district was at 175. Is, are you thinking somewhere in that neighborhood or?
I thought it was at 120.
So we currently pay 140.
140, okay.
We, we already pay, the recommendation for the 120 was just a standard per diem sub. So calls out sick or took a personal day just for a day here or there. That's our, uh, just general per diem rate. The 140 is if we're going to ask a teacher to fill in for another teacher for an extended period of time where they're now responsible for, you know, things such as grading and lesson planning and things of that nature. That's that $140 rate. We are very competitive. Now, every district has different definitions, so it is hard to come up with an apples-to-apples comparison. So we did our best. But we, we appear to be pretty competitive with the 140 rate. 175 was the highest we saw. And then obviously some districts might hire people into their salary and benefits ranks right away, which is, um, in my opinion, not, not something that we could afford to do, given the number of absences we have. So some will be between 140 and 175, I guess would be the range you're looking at, um, if you.
Not yet, Kaylin, not yet.
I was just wondering if, if you had considered if we were going to raise that, where it will go.
And I, I, I would lie if I thought raising it would solve all the problems. And most of our problems is there simply isn't a significant enough candidate pool to pull from. So, you know, it is a, of a supply and demand problem. Unfortunately, we, we can't generate more supply.
Paying more might not make us third choice or fourth choice, so to speak, right Zach?
Yeah. And, and what you did notice is the majority of our subs are pretty loyal to Quakertown. Over 50% of our subs only sub with Quakertown. And we have on that one sheet or, um, one PowerPoint slide, a significant number of our, of our subs actually, you'll notice, sub more than 10 days with us. So they are pretty loyal. So, you know, the, the increase in the rate might help. Um, I don't know that it would completely solve.
Not going to move that needle drastically, yeah.
Well, I, I had a question. Does the FF-CRA expire on December 31st? Or if somebody signs up for it on December 30th, do they still get 12 weeks?
My understanding is it expires at the end of the, the, the calendar year.
Can you guys hear me now? Is it still bad?
Man.
We can hear you. Just talk loud.
I don't know what happened. This thing was working. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah.
Maybe it's, how's this? Not better?
Yeah, that's better.
To your face.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Just yell loud.
Okay, so I always worry I'm talking too loud. So the reason that I brought this up was because I wanted us to maintain continuity in terms of the amount of teachers that we had. And we know that substitutes are very important with absences, with teachers taking leaves. So I wanted us to be competitive in the market to provide and be attractive. And, and, and what we're seeing right now is even though that we are seeing more interest in subs, we don't have enough. So I feel like we have to change our strategy. And we just so happen to have the funds to do it this year. And there's a couple of things that you should consider. The first thing is that it would be a short-term cost. It would be only for the short, short term for this year, given COVID. And we also need to make sure we're maintaining continuity. If we don't have enough teachers, we can't keep schools open. And we also want to make sure that teachers are not having to cover for other teachers who may be absent. They are missing their prep periods, things like that. So, um, it, you know, if we're not as competitive, I mean, we may be competitive, but these are circumstances. I just feel like we should be more aggressive in terms of what we're offering due to the situation that we're in.
Right. I, I think that, you know, by paying more, we're helping. Because it'll be easier to get those full-time, not full-time rather, uh, those long-term subs, which is one less thing for the administration to worry about that morning when they wake up.
I just want to point out one data point. If you remember, it might've been two board meetings ago, the board did increase our building sub rate up to 120. I think that was actually last year. I'm sorry, but allowed us to hire additional building subs. Our principals have been working on that, but we have not even been able to, to fill all of those building subs, subs slots. So if you were going to consider raising rates, the 120 would be the recommendation for the building sub, or I'm sorry, the per diem sub. We do try to keep a buffer between the per diem subs and the building subs. So we might want to consider that rate as well.
Hey, I'm all for raising the long-term 1 to 200 and the per diem to 150. My question is simply, I, it doesn't sound like we even have the bodies. It, it, but, but, but I'm, I'm making a point. I'm, I'm making a point here.
All right.
I don't think we have the bodies. It sounds to me like the number is almost irrelevant. There's just not enough people, even if we wanted to pay them the more, more money. That's my concern.
Well, we gotta try something. We have to try something different.
There's one, Shauna Doyle on the Q and A says if she could contract directly instead of through ESS.
I thought we were hiring more through directly.
We don't hire per diem subs directly.
Oh, it's the per diem subs. Okay.
Yeah. And if we were going to bring that back in-house, we might have some contractual issues with, with Source for Teachers, but the other issue was we don't have the software or the staff to be able to. That's what we pay Source for Teachers for. We don't have those staff. We eliminated those positions when we brought Source for Teachers in-house.
Well, the, the one thing we should look at, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll, I'll quit after this. Central Bucks had a deficit of, I think, 100 and some teachers. The only reason they were actually able to reopen schools is because they found long-term subs. So I think I want us to think about the strategies that some other districts are using and how to be proactive. Um, and I'm hearing from a lot of teachers that it's really important.
And, and Ron, I, I don't, to your point, I, I don't see the, the harm in offering more. If it's as you say, and there just aren't enough bodies, then it won't cost us anymore. But at least if there are people out there on the fence or people that may have worked per diem for Pen Ridge or Palisades or Sotterton, and now they see our rate for a longer-term sub and that we have openings, they may be compelled to come.
Well, it will cost us more because we're going to have to increase that rate to people who are already paying at the lower rate. So it's going to cost us more.
I stand corrected.
One of the things I'd like you to take away from this conversation is the, why do we need long-term subs and the amount of teachers that are, are out on FF-CRA or other things this year? As you, as I, I've shared with some of you, um, and I'll share with all of you in, in the, in the community, we're losing functional areas of the district, content areas of the district because of the, the concerns that some of our employees have with, with the pandemic. Some of our decisions. And I know it's tough making decisions. So for example, in our ELA area, English Language, Language Warner area, we have several of our teachers and, and support staff aides are, are out. And so in some of our buildings, we are scrambling to make that function happen. Middle school math. A lot of concerns recently at the secondary level. And where we have folks that, based on our decisions here at the, uh, on the screen with you and what we do, we implement, folks are leaving us. So we're, as, as other districts, like I won't mention another district's name, but they, they staffed their virtual model mostly with, with subs. So they could have a separate virtual model. And, and here with, in our district, we're going to be using subs. We are using subs in our areas that are incredibly important. Where we're legally responsible and we're not able to, um, to have qualified folks there. So just, and this is the backside of the curtain of this conversation. And I, I'm sure some of our, our folks that are out there listening are very concerned about that.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comments from the board? So if we were to, you, uh, Zach, you did mention if we wanted to move forward with something different, we would need to put a motion on the table?
Correct. This was just a presentation. There's no motion actually on the agenda tonight because we weren't sure where, where the board would want to go with those rates.
But you recommended it. You had a page with the recommendations on it.
So we have a page just for the per diem because we could, we were able to, uh, tell from our research, we were falling behind on the per diem. We're not, at least that's what the data suggests for long-term per diem, but, um, that's why we didn't have a recommendation for that one. That was up to sort of board consideration there. That one district did go all the way up to $175 a day, uh, as Ms. Mitchell pointed out.
I say we go for it.
I would make a motion.
Go ahead.
If I may, I would make a motion to follow Zach's advice and raise the per diem to $120 a day for the remainder of the 2021 calendar year from 105 and then raising the long-term per diem from 140 to, I can't read that side of the page because it's sideways. Whatever it is, from whatever.
You could write. Go with the recommendation page back up.
It's actually not listed the current rate in the second one, which is why I couldn't see it.
Correct. Then we, the 175 was the highest in, in the county. That was the,
Got it.
Ms. Mitchell pointed out that increase, that rate significantly this year.
So for, uh, our secretary of sanity, I'll start over. I would make a motion to follow Zach's recommendation of increasing the per diem from 105 to 120. And then from 140 to $175 per day for the long-term per diem rate.
Okay. Jennifer.
Discussion.
Was not nearly.
I don't believe that's actually the, I don't believe that's actually the recommendation of the, the administration. I thought the, we, the recommendation of the administration was to leave the long-term at 140.
Well, I, I mentioned earlier that I thought it would be better for all of us if we paid more and.
I think we should stay at 175 personally. The short-term expense.
Dave, I'm sorry. What did you say was the recommendation for the long-term? I, I didn't hear.
To 175 and match the highest pay and rate in the area.
Let's do it.
I'd be okay with raising the per diem to 120. I don't think we need to go to 175 on the long-term.
I think, I think it's more people are more likely to show up. If they know they're going to be here for 60, 90 days, if you're telling them they're going to make X amount of more money every day for 60 days, they're more likely to, you know, come with us sooner.
And we have the budget. We have the budget. We had a lot more retirements than we anticipated. We have a lot of leave requests. We could potentially have more in the future.
I can beat a sweat coming down Zach's forehead when you start saying we have money.
Yeah, I was, I was just shaking.
We've talked, we've talked about this, Zach and I, and I've talked to Dr.
Stroking out right now.
It's a short-term expense and would, do we want to remain operational or do we want to risk not having enough?
If we don't get the people, we might have to close the building.
Well, yeah, I think, I think Kaylin's point is a good one. And we're in the middle of COVID. I, I think it's important. We need the staff, right?
Or we can't operate.
Motion was made.
All right. If there's no other objection, can we vote?
Do a roll call vote. Anita, please. So let's restate the motion. So everyone's clear if that's okay.
The motion that I have, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is to raise the per diem rate from $105 to $120 a day and raise the long-term per diem rate from $140 to $175 per day for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year.
That's, that's correct.
Mr. McCucci.
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Weed.
Yes.
Mr. Reimers.
Yes.
Mr. Spear.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
No.
Mr. J. Mr. Jackson.
No.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes.
Seven to two, the motion passes.
I'm the Quaker Town.
Ma'am, that completes the superintendent's report.
All right, ten o'clock. Can you guys hear me? Okay, I'm just checking in.
You're good now.
I just want to say this one was an hour and a half shorter than the last one.
That's why I quickly wanted to say stop it right then. Because we're ticking.
Wait for my facilities report.
Oh, man, here we go. Okay, so standing committee reports. I don't know that we have a policy one, right? We did. We're postponing that one. Is that correct, Mrs. Ms. Weed?
Well, we had, I did the first read last week. And so really, all we needed to do was that there were policies on the board agenda just to approve tonight. There's nothing earth shattering there. It's just updating the policies from the P S B A and then a couple of changes to start and ending times due to the, you know, schedules that changed due to our reopening, et cetera. But that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, that's very important.
I don't need to. I think they're attached to the agenda. But I don't need to read through each one of these. I briefly discussed them last week.
You did.
So I would just want board approval for the policies that are listed there.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Spear, facilities.
Okay, I'll do my best here. Mr. Shock began the meeting. We we basically had four items that we went over, and I'll try to condense those for us. So Mr. Shock began the meeting by saying the Q C E A, which is our local teachers' union, had questions about whether or not teachers could open windows in their classrooms to get fresh air. To thoroughly vet the issue, and administration, the administration invited representatives from two experienced contractors, Echo Troll and environmental control systems to give advice. Mr. Shock also said that hearing from these experts will help the members of the committee respond to questions should they be asked. Now, Mr. Onifrio of Echo Troll and Mrs. Mr. Bedner of E C S both stated that it is important for teachers not to open windows in our in in our controlled buildings. So in Q E, it would be okay for them to open the windows, but all the other buildings are set up to manage fresh airflow in and out of the buildings. So those buildings should be controlled by our control systems, and we have made move. They have made adjustments to those systems, and I guess Rob could speak real quick to this, Rob Kristine, about the that our maintenance crew did or our facilities crew did make adjustments to add fresh air into our classrooms, correct, Rob?
Yes, that is correct.
So so yes, the teacher should not be opening windows in any of our schools except for Q E. That was item number one. Item number two is the Nighting update. There's been substantial completion of Nighting Elementary School, which opened to students on September fourteenth. It still remains on target for October fifteenth. Mr. Spatafora said punch list items will continue to be worked on after that date. Landscaping is continuing and painting is taking place. The elevator inspection is scheduled for tomorrow. And the building's final inspect inspection by the borough is scheduled for October fourteenth. Mr. Spatafora said contractors deserve a round of applause for working at the pace they have following the state's COVID shutdowns. And and I would agree with Mr. Spatafora there. And would like to give them a round of applause, if I could, to say, good job. I can't believe you got this done. Just a couple of weeks ago, the building was still a mess, and I can't believe they got it all back together. We also went over our capital projects list, and I I don't have to go through everything here, but we we've basically we should be able to use the the leftover funds we have from our Nighting bonds to handle our our district's capital projects this year, which I believe totaled somewhere eight hundred and thirty thousand, correct, Zach? Somewhere like that?
Yeah, that's our estimate. Once we get permission from the board next meeting to out the bid, we'll have exact numbers to to report back to the board.
So so these extra bonds could actually pay for two years of our five-year capital project funds if 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 it all works out well with our extra bond money. So that might be good. It it's an easing of our budget, too, that we could put that money back into our general fund. And the last thing that we discussed was the Fifth Street parking lot. On September fourth, the board received a letter from the owner of the atrium, a business located on Fifth Street across from the front parking lot of the high school. The business owner has a concern that the water running off the district parking lot could be causing flooding to the atrium. In June two thousand and three, the district performed a parking lot upgrade to expand the current lot. However, the project predated the current administration. Board direction is needed to whether or not to spend some money to investigate the business owner's concerns or let the business owner do the research. The committee recommended that Dewey Engineering perform an inspection and report back next month. And I believe that we did, that they're going to go ahead and do that inspection for us. Correct, Zach or Rob?
That that's correct. Rob's going to go out with them. Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's next week. It it shouldn't be a significant cost to do some do some work to to look into that individual's concern, and we'll we'll have a report back for the facilities committee next month.
I assume that's Rob's yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Picture nodded. So that's it for the facilities report. If anybody has any questions, I'm sure we'll be getting reports on things coming up as well with Nighting and that parking lot study.
Thank you very much. Mr. Akmanowicz, tech school update.
So the J O C hasn't met since our last board meeting here, so I don't necessarily have anything to report as far as new business. However, Mr. Spear has been working on the J O C documents. The articles of agreement documents that we have, and they were recently sent out to the board to vote on, and I expected that to actually be on this agenda today, and I did not take notice previewing the agenda that it doesn't appear to be on here. We were supposed to vote this evening, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, on the changes, the suggested changes from the subcommittee to change the J O C agreement between the sending districts.
There's an explanation if 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 we could. Keith, I actually brought this to Keith in our finance committee. Keith, if you want to just mention why you wanted to but put this into finance committee before bringing it to the board for a vote?
Yeah, I mean, I it simply stated is I don't understand. I I haven't read through the documents. I think, you know, we've been inundated with our health and safety plan and some other features. And, you know, quite honestly, I don't know that I know the total financial impact. And so I was we have another meeting in two weeks, or chance it, and we have a finance committee meeting right before that to digest this and what it means financially for the district. You know, I I spoke with Chris offline. Zach did an analysis that it could cost us somewhere in a neighborhood of, you know, forty to fifty thousand dollars more a year. And a hundred and seventy thousand over four years. So I just think we just need to understand what we're what we're playing with. I don't I don't feel comfortable tonight voting. I said that if it goes to a vote, you know, I I can't control that. But that I thought that it was better, you know, we 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 had a presentation at eleven fifteen after a very contentious board meeting. We've been inundated with working on on trying to understand this this health and safety plan, and I just felt that that I wasn't prepared to vote for it. I thought that you go to committee, we should look at the numbers, understand what we're getting ourselves into. That's the I think it's a hasty decision. That's just my opinion.
All right. I just want to say that I agree that I think you and the committee should review the documents. I mean, we're really only talking about a two-week difference between voting on it tonight, and I would urge the other board members to go back, review the documents if you haven't, to understand them. It's a complete and total revamping of the funding formula for the tech school, so it's important stuff. But I think we do need to put it through the committee so that everybody has seen this and vetted it, and when it does come to a vote, we can, you know, vote on it knowing what's in it.
I I just want to say that I
I agree.
I can't control it necessarily, but I would very much like everybody to take a look at this and us to make a board vote on this at our our next meeting in two weeks. If that if y'all would make that possible for me, I'd be appreciative.
Yeah, and I agree with that. We were talking over each other, but I'm not prepared to vote on this. I don't feel I understand.
Yeah. For me, Dave, I I don't know if during during the board meetings that you've been at at the tech center, is there a different presentation? Is there something that is a little more describing the the funding models? Somehow I feel the the need for almost like sell sell me on the idea, like, help me understand what's the dynamics? What are we changing?
You need to talk to Megan. Megan.
Yeah, I I I think that, John, I think you're just asking for another forty-five-minute presentation by Megan, so I can make that happen if you really want.
We will get a summary for everybody before the next board meeting, because I do think I I am in favor of it. Just so you guys know, I'm in favor of the change. But I'm also very familiar with it, and so I think I would like for everyone else to be familiar with it, and that way we're comfortable next time, and we can vote on it.
And totally okay with it. I think once people learn more about it and how fair, much more fair it appears to be, you know, even though it may have a little bit more of an impact on this district, you know, we've been using a pretty archaic mathematical formula quite for quite some time, and that quite frankly, the tech school, you know, we're we're in hard times, and it's because the formula is wrong.
Yeah, and just one further thought on it, you know, there's there's things that may wind up costing Quaker Town more money, but there's also things in it that will save us money. If that makes sense, and, you know, I don't want to get into the details of it because, you know, by and large, I support it as well. But I think the worst thing we can do is rush a vote on it and then have people questioning it months from now. Well, wait a minute, I didn't know about this, or nobody told me this, or I didn't see this, and that's what I'm trying to prevent. That's why I think we need to go through the, you know, the proper channels, if you will, and send it through the finance committee.
I'll be sure to share that information with all of you, too. It was already shared with everybody, but I I'll make sure that you have the freshest, newest one.
Well, present, let's present it in a way, though, that's.
Can I? So I think we could ask Zach, you know, if if he minds putting his, you know, I I saw your analysis, but if you could put something short together for the next finance committee, maybe we roll it over into the the board meeting for us.
Yeah, Zach, I did speak to Bill Gerhart, too, about whether or not those projects will be ready to even be on next year's budget. And you you may you may want to talk to him over at the tech school, too, before you update your report as well. To just to see if he's even prepared to put one of those items that you were saying is going to cost us significant money next year. He basically said, you know, he would have to get contractors up there now to be able to have that ready for the budget next year, and it's most likely not going to happen.
Yeah, those those projects, not to go on about it, were part of the executive director's budget presentation that we received from the tech school. So I can certainly ask them for an update on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dave, did you have any other report?
No, that that concludes the list of my concerns this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's going to move us to the fiscal consent agenda. And on that agenda, we have the approval approving the contract with E Rate Central for Technology Infrastructure. And there's a proposal in there. Not need a motion for that.
Motion by Mr. Jackson.
Second, Dave Akmanowicz.
Okay, discussion. No discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously onto our facilities consent agenda. We have the approval of C X Tech quote for the purchase of additional network switches for Nighting Elementary School. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved, Steve Klein.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Zach, can you tell me if this is covered under the contingency fund in that project, or if this is an additional?
So it it did come up after the fact, but we we can fit it into our F F and E budget. So it's not going to come out of the contingency. And we we are still under with our F F and E budget. It was intentional, so we might have some more purchases to bring back to the board on furniture. You know, Scott Godshock is working through that, you know, now that the building's actually going to be fully open, and we knew we would probably have some additional needs. You know, after the building was up and running, so we're still we're still under.
Okay. I guess we'll move to vote here. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is the human resource consent agenda. We have administrative staff, professional staff, supervisory, technology staff, support staff, unit pay, and substitute staff. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
And can I get a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Klein.
Discussion.
Is this where we would have to introduce the motion to up the substitutes again?
No, this is actually just the some addition to to substitute aid list and the substitute nurse list. So it's separate from the actual pay rate.
Can can I just understand the contingency plan for the do you have a pot, somebody interim for PAF? Is there an announcement for that at all?
Sir, I don't I don't understand your question.
You mean for the principal? Interim principal there or something?
We we were going to bring something back at the soon as we have clarity of the length of time that the principal is going to be out, bring something back at the next meeting.
All right, just just curious.
We have someone in that position, but I think that to Dr. Horner's point, we'll have more information for next board meeting.
Now, I see that there's a lot of paid leaves in here. Are those F F C R A, F F M C A leaves or medical leaves or undisclosed leaves?
Yeah, for for confidential reasons, we we don't typically state exactly why. But I can tell you that typically if a leave is paid, it could be for something such as that, or or individuals using sick time or whatever it might be. But we try not to identify what what exactly the leave is for for individuals. That's certainly something I can provide in an executive session, but not in a public meeting.
That's cool. I just just wanted to, I just was thinking about the guidance we just gave, you know, an hour and a half ago, and then saying that, I was like, wow, okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously onto the policy and programs consent agenda. We have the approval of the policy committee recommendations, Mrs. Weed spoke of earlier. We had a first reading. This is our second reading. So I'll need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
I'll second, Mr. Kern.
Discussion.
I think Mrs. Weed should read them again. Just kidding.
There's quite a few.
But I am big.
There's quite a few, Steve. I don't think you want that.
I'm just teasing.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, I missed somebody talking. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. We have some information items. And Zach, if you want to speak about this first one, I know this one is pretty important. And this one is about our transportation transportation services R F P timeline.
Yeah, so at the last board meeting, the board did authorize working with PASVO as the consultant to to help me run this process. working with Pasbo as the consultant to help me run this process. We did meet with our consultant, Wayne McCullough. The recommendation is that Ms. Mitchell appoint a transportation committee of three, just like our other committees of three board members. It won't be a substantial commitment. We're thinking maybe three meetings along, along the way between now and February. And we would be working with our consultant to review the RFP, review the results of the RFP and potentially interview any finalists. Before making a recommendation to the board sometime in February. So I believe, I have to talk with Ms. Mitchell. I believe she's going to appoint a committee at the next board meeting, is that correct? So we just wanted to make sure we put that, that timeline out there and that information out there.
I just want to, ahead of time, thanks Steve and Chris and Kalen for volunteering.
I wouldn't mind. Keith is trying to still get me back. So yeah, so I will be recommending a committee on that at the next board meeting. But for your edification, if you'd like to look through that information, we have a suspension report. An enrollment report. We also have public comment from the last board meeting since we always make sure to put those out to the public. And we are on to new business, new board business. Is there any new board business? That's a first. Okay, and as far as the rest of the public comments, as I mentioned, those will be read, or excuse me, those will be published along with the, the board minutes for the next board meeting. Date for board member calendars. Just so you all are aware, we do have on October twenty-second, a finance committee meeting, an education and curriculum committee meeting. Hey, maybe those meetings would be good, Chris, for you guys to talk, talk about instruction, what's working, not working. Can incorporate that there. We have another board meeting at that date as well, November fifth, we have a facilities meeting. November twelfth, finance, education, and then a board meeting. And with that, I am moving on to our adjournment, so I would just need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Before we do?
Sure.
Will we be meeting in person on the twenty-second or will we be meeting via Zoom?
I, I really don't have a problem meeting in person.
I, I just want to decide now, so.
Well, it's hard to decide now because well, we could talk about it.
The sound system is fixed, don't we?
I think I've seen, so I've seen certain boards that have been able to do this effectively. And what they're doing is there's one, almost like a board meeting microphone. I used, they used to have those in corporate meetings all the time. We have one, I think, in one of our meeting rooms, but.
Have to probably buy like a Zoom room, right? You know, there's, there's hardware that you need. The way that we did it with our personal laptops and just, you know, it was mostly operator, it wasn't the technology or.
Right, right.
People not muting and, and we could, we couldn't hear each other, but the public couldn't hear, so. You know, I think that's, that's the primary problem. We, we don't have the type of equipment. Because it really could be from one camera and enough microphones that people can hear and so it might be in Joe Cuzzo's.
I think that if every board member just had a headset on, it would eliminate all the issues.
I do too, and I think that was something we suggested. Look, how easy it is.
It's a human problem.
I mean, honestly, Dave, as much as I like that idea, I would almost rather look into some hardware. And I think we'll take it offline. So to answer your question, Mr. Reimers, I'd like to, we'll look into it.
I don't want to mess up my hair with these headphones, so.
No, put the hat back on.
I did want to make one comment too that, that was brought up earlier. I was looking through the minutes while we were going over this from the last meeting. And we did vote to, it says, motion to amend the health and safety plan to state that the district provides social distancing at the secondary level as close to six feet as possible, but no less than three feet. So we did vote on that and it did say motion passed.
Well, look at you. Thank you for that update. Appreciate that. More to come in our next meeting. Thank you all, for those of you who have stayed with us, and thank you all, board members and administration for our meeting tonight. And I'll, did I get a motion to adjourn?
No, you need to make a motion to adjourn.
I motioned it.
Did, did somebody save the comments off of the chat?
Yes, I will export those tomorrow morning.
We just need to yea or nay the motion, Kalen.
Okay, can I get it? Yay.
Good night, everybody. Wash your hands.
Good night.
Good night.
Jeff, you were very.